Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 7th, 2021 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're happy and delighted to have each of you with us this evening. And at this time, we ask that Ms. La Magna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas and all exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Persons may visit City Hall during a public meeting to make public comments subject to these city procedures and compliance with all recommendations from the CDC to minimize the spread of COVID-19. The commission chambers will be closed for in-person attendance by the public. The City Hall lobby will be equipped with the lectern and a microphone for public comments and audio/video feed to the commission chambers. Yellow forms will be provided for those who wish to make public comment before the City Commission. Persons may enter the lobby to speak on an item before the City Commission when called upon for two and a half minutes. The lobby will also have a limited defined area with social distancing for people waiting to make public comments. In addition, the exterior entryway to City Hall will be equipped with a loudspeaker for persons waiting for permission to enter the lobby due to space limitations in the lobby. The public may also monitor public meetings from their smartphone, tablet, or other electronic device on the city's website and enter City Hall for public comment at the appropriate times. All persons must comply with social distancing requirements while at City Hall, such as by remaining at least six feet apart, and use of facial masks is mandated to combat the spread of COVID-19. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the City Commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed under the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings, and citizens may speak at the designated time. And resolutions under item number 10 are also open for public comment, and citizens may speak at the designated time. Also, citizens completing the yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two-and-a-half-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You'll be told when your time has expired. Item number 14 is the public comment form, and it will convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. Also, citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the City Commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinance reads as follows: "It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the City Commission or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated. To disrupt such meeting, order, refuse, obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful to the views of others. Personal attacks on the City Commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed." All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Traeger.
Here.
Commissioner Delgado.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is the approval of the minutes of the February 3rd, 2021 regular City Commission meeting. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner May, second from Commissioner Delgado. Do we have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a reason why in April we're getting February minutes? Is it just that we have a lot?
We have a lot.
Okay. There's a lot of people in the office, too.
And the meetings have gotten historically longer over the past couple of years, so.
All right.
Do we have any other questions? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0. At this time, we'll hear from our agenda. If there are any changes concerning our agenda, our City Manager will address them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we're going to add item 6A presentation, Commissioner May, public records request. We're going to take item 8J, Samsula demolition, and fill it from tonight's agenda.
Motion to accept the agenda with the said changes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
So, we're going to move on to the item that was added tonight, item 6A for Commissioner May.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. Last week, I received a public records request from Ms. Ann Ruby. The request reads as follows: "Greetings, we have a public records request for the following: All text messages sent or received by Commissioner Quanita May about the City Manager selection. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions or if you need assistance with this request." This evening, I'm going to comply with that request. There are not many, but I'm going to read them into record because I want to be very clear on what was sent, what was said, what was received in response. First one. "Commissioner May, thanks for your consideration today. I truly appreciate, sorry, I truly believe that Derrick is the best choice for our city. He has experience, and he knows our neighborhood, and he knows the state of Florida laws and regulations. Last but not least, he was educated in Daytona Beach at BCU. He would give hope to our children." Next. "Good afternoon, Commissioner May. My name is Tamara Barnes, a student at Bethune-Cookman University. I would like to express my sponsor for Derrick Feature, City Manager. I give her my city email address. She responds with, 'Thank you. Would you like me to email an introduction of myself and what my initiatives are agriculturally?'" Next one. "Hello, I'm a student at Bethune-Cookman. I would Derrick Feature for City Manager." Next one. "Hi, I'm a student at Bethune-Cookman University. I'd like for you to support Derrick Feature as a City Manager." The. Next. "We want Feature. I'm a student at Bethune-Cookman." Next. "Good afternoon, Quanita May. I'm a native resident of Daytona Beach, Florida. I send this text hoping you greatly consider voting for the hire of Derrick Feature. I believe that he will make an excellent City Manager in my hometown. He has history, knowledge, and a love of the city. As a graduate of Bethune-Cookman University, he and I have that legacy in common. His experience as a manager should give him prime consideration. Please give him your vote." Next. "I'm working hard." Yes, you are. "Are you watching? I'm about to get creamed by Feature supporters, putting on emotional armor. You are screwed. Looks like Feature. Hope he does a great job. Mayor backtracking." Back to Feature. Feature. "Wish him the best and hope he has, uh, I wish him the best and hope he's the manager we deserve to have. Thanks for caring so much for our city. I took a risk for Future, and I'm sure the fallout will be bad for me. I did the right thing." I don't believe that at all. You took the risk because you thought it was the best for our city, not for any personal gain for yourself. Will be persecuted tomorrow, but I know I did the right thing. I hope that you are wrong about that. There may be a lot of people will appreciate you stating your position. There was no disrespect involved toward Mr. Feature." Next. "Hi, Commissioner May. I hope that all is well with you. Just food for thought in your decision for City Manager. You represent a big part of the students at Bethune-Cookman, sorry, at BCU. Because one of their own is up for selection, it would not be in your best interest to disregard the candidate. Just wanted to give you a heads-up. If you'd like to talk, please let me know, praying that you make the best and right decision." Next. "Hang in there, my friend. Who really cares what the NAACP wants or whom allegedly speaks on its behalf? Could the threat have possibly made to ensure you vote against Feature?" Hmm, very Machiavellian of me. Very Machiavellian of them. "Don't try to mess with my therapy head. They're not that sophisticated. Why doesn't Feature apply to BCU as President? That spot is already reserved. For what it's worth, I think Feature is okay. A public shaming of the NAACP cowards in a vote for Feature might have him beholden to you politically speaking. Just a thought. Far be it from me to get in the way of your wrath. Nice try. Like I said, what it's worth." Turn on Burnier, it's about BCU. "I have a plan. Do tell. Think of it as a cliffhanger. Okay, it's a new day, new challenge, and we all get to disagree, and then we have to move the city forward. So let me know what's next on the horizon." Next. "Give me about 30 minutes. Sounds good. I want to talk to you about my impressions from the City Manager candidates today." Super, you ready? "Yes, I still like Feature. I think he just answered your question that you didn't ask. Asked him earlier, he knew it was coming. I'm glad you had the conversation with him. Not an easy subject. I'd like to know if you think you got the answer you needed. The one and only reservation was the question you raised about a communication you had with certain people. He's still too small-town for me. I'm looking for bigger thinking. Let's see what happens next." Okay, I get where you're coming from, but generally more, I get where you're coming from, but I'm generally more trusting of people with his demeanor and excitement about raising their game and making people proud. You can mold him, but not so much the other guy. IMO. Pleaser, but I'm open. I'm liking his business side. Pleaser, I'm sorry. I'm still listening. He understands the dollars of building. They all do or will. Everything he's talked about, the other guy can do, and the other guy seems a lot more genuine and likable, like you are, Quanita." Like you are. Don't discount that. I'm not likable. I'm direct, focused, efficient, and mission-driven. I am too, but we can be both. Hopefully, we will be. To be clear, though, I don't dislike this guy, just like the other guy more. Hmm, no one would buy it. Then we need to keep selling. You could ask him, you could ask him if he's going to export the tiff from rich CRAs to poor CRAs. You can't do that. We should have made the CRAs bigger. You win. It's not like that. It would have been okay with one or the other. I did the right thing. I think it was a tough call. If they can get the contract worked out, I think everyone should get behind him and work together to take the city to the next level. I don't really know what to say. Took me a night to rebalance. People have chosen, and it's a new day." Next. "I respect your integrity and resolve, Quanita. I stand by my thoughts. I did the right thing. I agree with you on that and respect your point of view and decision tonight." That's what I was trying to say. Friends can disagree without it being a big deal. And Moore was the most knowledgeable. This is about the future. The future is bright for Daytona regardless. Everyone wants that. Finally. "Thank you for today. It meant a lot to me. My internal value system guides me strongly. I don't know what I did other than listen. Sometimes..." ...guided by your value system. At this time, I move that all City Commissioners, the Mayor Derrick Feature, Robert Eslaven, and Barbara Lipscomb submit all text messages sent or received about the City Manager selection, and that such submissions be made by close of business at City Hall on Friday, April 9th. That's all.
Could you repeat that last statement again?
Certainly. "I move that all City Commissioners, the Mayor Derrick Feature, Robert Eslaven, and Barbara Lipscomb submit all text messages sent or received about the City Manager selection, and that such submissions be made by close of business at City Hall on Friday, April 9th."
Mr. Attorney, is Mr. Slaven or Mr. Feature subject to this request in any way?
To the extent they've sent text messages to the Commissioners, those would be public records.
If they've texted the Commissioners regarding this matter?
Right.
Have any of you all received a text message from Mr. Feature or Mr. Slaven? I have not. I have not. Therefore, they are...
I should also say, the contract itself may make their internal documents public records as well, like their interview materials that they collected on your behalf.
Wait, who, Slaven?
Slaven. So, Slaven did background information. They did interview materials or questionnaires. All that would be public record as well, under their contract and under the law.
Okay, so...
Also...
But those are not texts, so that's not really relevant to the request.
Specifically, all text messages sent and received about the City Manager selection.
I'm on the clock now, okay? What I'm trying to establish at this time is that Mr. Feature is absolved of these questions. Can you give me any circumstance under which his text messages would be required?
They would be a public record if they were texted to any City Commissioner.
And they were not, according to what we've stated here. Have you, has anyone received any? I have not. So, we've established that...
Or for that matter, to the City Manager.
I have none.
Okay. So, we have none from him. He's precluded. I personally have no correspondence from Mr. Slaven, but whatever it is that she's requesting from Mr. Slaven, let's make certain that he receives that, you know, that she receives that information.
The only thing I have is tons of emails, just like she does.
Yeah, well, I sent, I sent...
In my city, so I have text messaging.
Yeah, I sent all my emails, but I'm sure I have some text messages. And since I'm being brought into this, I'm certainly going to comply with that. I want to go on record for stating that it is a right to request this information. It is your right to request it, just as it has been requested of you. Personally, didn't, you know, I don't understand this evening, and maybe since you've taken our time, which we didn't have to approve this to be a part of this meeting, because we could have rejected that as an addition to the agenda. I want to make sure that we understand that. And if that's the desire of the Commission in the future to do so, then I would encourage them to execute that. But I would, as a body, you know, and, you know, one thing I don't want this Commission to become is a mockery to public service. And I don't want to be a part of what I refer to as shenanigans and almost buffoonery. I don't want to make a mockery of the public's work. And so, if all you're going to do is request that of us, I have the floor, and you can have it after that. If all you're going to do is request that of us, and that's all you have to say to us as your colleagues, is that, you know, you're bringing us into your matter. If you, if that's all you want to do is request of us that, and that's all you have to say, because this was your presentation, is that all you have to say?
My official motion, yes, sir, it is.
Okay. Anyone else have any other comments regarding this matter?
May I, Mayor?
Yes.
You've stated this as a motion. We are taking that to be a request for public records and not as a motion to be approved by this Commission. Is that accurate?
No, what I'm looking for is I'm making a public records request as it was made of me.
Okay.
Understood.
And that request can be fulfilled through my office, and I'll need a copy of what you read into the record, Commissioner May, for the public record request. There you are. Thank you.
Commissioner May, can I ask why you would like a public records request of all of ours?
So, as a matter of law, we cannot demand those, answers to those questions when someone makes a public records request.
Oh, okay. All right.
Well, there's no demand, but can we ask as a body or as colleagues during the Commission meeting?
Not actually. You know, the law is that you can't require or request of a person who's making a public records request the reasons for that request. So, she is entitled to not answer those questions. And you are prohibited from asking those questions at the same time.
All right.
Can I just say that I supported your decision to go with who you felt was the very best candidate? I was very torn myself at the end and just decided to make another decision. And you are well within your rights and entitled to make the decision that you made. I didn't look at you any different or think that you were, you know, not a team player or whatever. And I am sorry that people are requesting your records. Not sure why, and, but I just want to say that I supported your decision to choose who you felt was the best candidate. That's what you were supposed to do. If that's, if it matters any.
I just want to say that I just think it's just dragging our new manager into something that is an effort to drag him into something. And we're trying to move the city forward. And I don't personally find it, I'm not appreciative of it. So, I just want it to be known. I don't appreciate it. Anyone else?
Personally, I don't have a problem. You can have all my emails.
It's not my records that I'm concerned about. It's just a matter of, you know, we lost three candidates dropped out. You know, we, you know, when you do things, you start to look a certain way. And after you start to look a certain way, you know, it's my goal just not to be a certain way. And so, are there any other comments?
I just wanted to make sure for a public records request. So, if I texted my wife, City Manager, City Manager candidate, running late, or won't be home, or this is taking a long time, or something like that, I mean, that's not within the public record, right? So, these are only requests that would be, obviously, anything that was sent to our emails is clear. I'm a little bit unsure about what, what the text message scope of that would be.
The record is public regardless of whether it's on your personal phone or on a city phone or on your computer. It doesn't matter where it's located. What is significant is the content. So, if the content is related to a matter which may come before this Commission, then it is a public record. So, to the extent that the request seeks information concerning the selection of the City Manager, that certainly is a matter which came before the Commission and would be a public record.
Okay. All right, no further comments?
Well, I'd just like to say, and I kind of stand with you, Mr. Mayor, that this was a request that was made of you. So, now you want to make the request of us. This is what, tit-for-tat? I think we just need to be cautious as we prepare to go into a new administration, again, of how we look and how we allow the public to make us look. We have control of what we do up here. And as Commissioner Henry has indicated, that was your decision. I've stood alone up here by myself before as well. And as long as you've made the best decision that you can go home and live with, that's all we can ask of you. If six other people chose something different, that was their choice. So, if a citizen or citizens are not pleased with the decision you made, that's something that they'd have to live with as well. You were voted in that seat for a purpose. People believed that you could do the best for them, and that's all that matters. So, the four years you're here, and if you're here longer, you have to serve to the best of your ability and live with the decisions that you make. And let me tell you, I purposely did not communicate because I did not want you all to think I was going to ride on the Wildcat, then whatever thing. I didn't even mention anything about Bethune-Cookman while I was interviewing him because I wanted to see what kind of man he was and what he was going to bring to us. And the same thing with Moore. I mean, you come in my office, you know, we're having our dialogue, but I intentionally stayed away from anything that I thought would hinder my selection of who the candidate was going to be.
Okay. Let's move on to item, the next item.
Okay. Moving on to item number seven. This is public comments for people addressing the City Commission on any item on the consent agenda. I do have a number of speakers.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, Ms. La Magna, do you want us to forward? How should we respond to these? Print them, print them out and bring them to you for the emails to a specific address?
The rest was for text messages only.
Text messages, not for emails.
Oh, not emails.
Text messages will need to be screenshotted, if that's a word.
You want to make a comment?
And then printed.
I thought we heard, I thought I heard emails, too.
I believe it was just for text messages. Is that correct, Commissioner May?
Not yet. I'm sorry, misunderstood.
The manager would like to make a comment.
Okay.
You know, I've been here over 16 years and have had the pleasure of working with a lot of different Commissions. And through that process, you learn a lot about a community. And we've got people in our community that inquire about everything. In fact, that one particular individual who required a view has submitted over 160 requests for information through the public records law to the city. So, that's time and effort that we all spend following something that somebody wants, something they have a right to know, they have a right to do. And that's, I would say, that's an unusual person because I guarantee you, there's not five other people that make that many requests to the city. But, but beyond all of that, beyond all of that, what is important is that we continue to do our job here and do the very best thing that we can for this city. And I can tell you, I think there's not a person up here that doesn't, that isn't committed to that, even, even if it's in their own way, different than others. But we all are different people with different backgrounds. And, and I think it's incumbent on us to, you know, to really recognize to some degree. But at the same time, we all have to keep in mind one thing, the job of making decisions that move this city forward and solve the problems that the community has and be respectful of those involved. But by and large, these candidates, I think you got two good candidates. I don't necessarily think that the process was, might not have been the best, but we got the best candidates. And the two that you have, I think, are, were qualified for the job. And Mr. Feature is certainly going to do a great job for this city, and he's committed to it. In fact, I've scheduled meetings to, to meet with him during his process of transition. So, I think you're going to be very pleased with the candidate that's selected. And I think everybody needs to be sure we're committed to working for the kind of product we want in the end, and that it's a healthy community with a good leadership. And that's all I'd say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we'll move on to public speaking on the consent agenda. When you approach a lectern, please state your name and address for the record. Our first speaker is Barbara Bonarigio. Please excuse me if I'm... Bonarigo.
Wait, before we move forward, this is being requested by Friday, this Friday?
Well, the request, I know that was stated in the request. The law is that the response has to be provided within a reasonable time. So, that's what I'm sure the clerk will endeavor to do.
Well, we have to go through a lot of, it takes, it's going to take my time. So, I don't know what other people are like, but it takes my time. So, I just needed to know a reasonable time. Okay.
What is considered reasonable?
It depends on the nature of the request. Obviously, reasonable is different depending on each request Obviously, reasonable is different depending on each request and the scope of the request, so...
The state does define.
Reasonable is not the expected from me by Friday. That's what's reasonable. Okay.
Okay. My address is 10 Clydesdale Drive, Ormond Beach. As a concerned resident, I'm worried our local government is taking advantage of the COVID epidemic and is using it as...
This is on item 8A.
Yeah, let me know what it's on.
I'm sorry.
8A? Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
2:30 again, or?
Give her her two minutes and 30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. Again, as a concerned resident, I'm worried our local government is taking advantage of the COVID epidemic and using it as a cover to meet behind closed doors. The CDC has recommended the following precautions when meeting in groups: wash your hands, wear a mask, and stay six feet apart. So I ask our city council members, why are you not following the CDC guidelines when conducting official business and allowing residents of our community their constitutional right to peacefully assemble? Many of you are seen around town at other large gatherings with and without your masks, with and without social distancing, and with and without appropriate group sizes. Do you believe the guidelines only apply to you whenever you see best fit? Do you believe the government is smarter than its residents? If you truly believe in government by the people, for the people, then I ask you to open your chamber doors and allow your residents to partake in their local government. Thank you very much.
Thank you. What citizen city did you say you were from?
Ormond.
Ormond Beach.
Thank you.
Volusia County, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, speaking on 8A, E, and F. And on deck is Frederick Brown.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. My first concern is the pier. This is the third time in recent memory that we're replacing the pilings and the cross braces. I've been here 40 years, and in the 40 years, only once was there worked done on the underside of the pier. And now, within, what, three or four years, this is our third time. So either we are not getting qualified people to do the work, or we're not paying sufficiently. But there's no reason to constantly, every year, have to fix the pier. They have to do it right the first time. Secondly, you have a thing here on F, the concrete. You have a contract for three weeks. Jim, is that date wrong? It goes through 5/4. That doesn't make sense, for a contract for three weeks and then it ends for construction of concrete. Jay? The Sports Limited, we're opening up all of our sports locations, all of our sports facilities, but are we opening public buildings like the Public Works Building, Police Building, City Hall? City Hall is open to some extent. So what are we opening and what are we not opening with this particular one? And lastly, I know it's been polled, but we use city funds to tear down a building. Are we putting a lien on that building, or do they get it torn down for free? I know you polled it, but it should not be the city's responsibility to tear down somebody's building. In an emergency, I could understand that, but we should have some way of recouping those finances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is Suzanne, excuse me, Suzanne O'Deen. He's speaking on 8A.
8 what?
8A.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, for allowing me to speak once again. I hope everyone had a fine Easter. I'm looking forward to our new city manager joining the team so we can move forward. I agree that this is a great small town. I'd like to see us grow into an even greater large town. That said, first thing first, I want to applaud you, Mayor, for taking proactive action on the COVID situation and coming up with an alternative plan for the citizens. I will say this, however, there's quite a few seats in here that are nice and empty, that are more than six feet apart. I've attended a number of meetings, and as was previously pointed out, a number of you have been at meetings where you have and have not had masks. I personally have had my vaccination. I hope that the rest of you already have as well, and that certainly reduces the chance. It's time for us to allow the citizens, which is who you are working for, to be able to speak in the front end of the meeting, as it used to be, and be allowed to sit here in the city commission meetings so that we can see firsthand what's going on. Additionally, there are so few chairs out there, I can barely stand because of some injuries. But there's a lot of people that can't sit at all, and they've been forced outside of the building. This is wrong. This is the people's commission. You are the people's mayor. You need to let the people attend the meeting. My second item I have to move very quickly on to, because I only have 150 seconds to speak, is item 9E, about the development of the public land into the water thing. Now, I have...
Sir, I believe for 9E, you signed up to speak for that. That's a public hearing item.
Yes, I did.
Okay, you can speak when that item's called.
So I can speak on a separate time?
Uh huh.
Okay, I was, I apologize, I was under the impression that I had to speak at this time, because in the past, they've had to do everything at the same. All right, so then I will be back to speak at that item as well.
That's for items on the consent agenda that you're speaking.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And the other item I wanted to talk about, of course, was pulled from the agenda. I will be here if it ever gets put back on. It needs to be heard. Again, you have a lot of citizens out here that spend hours on hard metal chairs waiting to have a chance to speak for 150 seconds. And I am a senior, and I can tell you, it's rough out here. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Suzanne O'Deen, and on deck is Patricia Hurd. And both have signed up for 8A.
Hello, good evening. My name is Suzanne O'Dina. I live at 716 North Wild Olive in Daytona Beach. And I would like to ask you all to please open this room up or find a room where we can come in. We sat outside in the winter, in the cold, in the rain. I understand your concerns about COVID. I have those, too, just got my shot yesterday. However, we're coming upon the rainy season, we're coming upon the heat, and I do believe it could have been managed so that we could be inside with y'all. There's a lot of difference between hearing what you're saying over a speaker and seeing your body language and your interaction. I also would like to ask that you please put the public back within the meeting. Having the public speak after the meeting with no video, no recording is kind of like sweeping us all under the rug and putting us in the late evening. So please, consider opening a room for us so that we can be with you, and please consider inviting us back in. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patricia Hurd, and on deck is Steve O'Neill.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Patricia H. Hurd, 822 Vernon Street, Daytona Beach, Florida, I'm here only to speak briefly. I'm speaking on the item to extend the time that you, as commissioners, will decide to let us back in. It is important, my health is important to me. There are people who do not wear masks, they're not keeping social distancing, washing their hands, or nothing. Last year, about March 13th, 2020, it was told to us on the avenue, which is Dr. Mary McLeod-Patton Boulevard, that we had to shut down Bike Week. We follow your directions, but there were other people in the city, especially on the beach side, that did not close down. My health is important. Your health is important. I don't care nothing about sitting in here when I can see you virtually on TV at home or whatever. We voted for you to make decisions for us, and we are holding you accountable for that. As far as extending the date, that's left up to the commissioners. I don't care what the governors say or no one else. Being at the age of 79 years old, I want to be around to see 20, 25 more years. So it's left up to you to decide if we come back in or we stay out. And half of the people I've been seeing, I don't see them at commissioner meetings, no way. Good evening and have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final speaker is Steve O'Neill. Didn't put which item that you're speaking on, on the consent agenda.
Hello.
Which item are you speaking on, on the consent agenda?
7A.
8A.
8A?
7A.
Okay, so for 7A, you can sign up to speak on any item that is listed on the consent agenda. Those are the items under number 8?
8A.
Okay.
My name is Steve O'Neill. I live at 600 Oakridge Boulevard in Daytona Beach. And it is my understanding that these meetings continue to be essentially closed to the public as we're all standing outside with an inadequate speaker. We can barely hear. The communication is a problem. It's difficult understanding what's happening in here when you're standing out there and you can barely hear. As well, it's difficult to give our input on issues. And we think it's about time that the public be allowed into the meetings to hear the meetings, hear each other, and participate, provide input, and gain input from y'all. It's extremely important, especially with the examples we have of lack of communication to and from the city on important issues all around us, such as construction shutdowns. There's all kinds of important issues where we need to be heard, and we need to hear you. And we think this meeting needs to be opened up, and we think that the public comments need to be recorded into the record. And that's really all I have to say, is please, let's communicate better, and it all starts with y'all. Thank you.
And I believe that was my final speaker for the consent agenda.
All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Delgado. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Okay. We're going to move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item 9A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Timoca North Community Development District, CDD. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing, an ordinance granting the petition of Chris 393 LLC for establishment of the Community Development District, creating and establishing the Timoca North Community Development District, providing for name, powers, and duties, providing description and boundaries, providing initial members of the Board of Supervisors, providing severability, and an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner May, a second from Commissioner Delgado.
And I do have Mr. Mark Watts here to answer any questions.
We have any questions for Mr. Watts? Okay, thank you. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Moving on to item 9B. It is the Development and Administrative Services Redevelopment Division, Daytona Beachside Villas, formerly known as WC Grand, planned district redevelopment, PDRD rezoning in preliminary plat. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi judicial hearing, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone approximately 0.9 acres of property generally located on the west of South Grandview Avenue between Goodall Avenue and Braddock Avenue from PDRD planned development redevelopment to PDRD planned development redevelopment, approving the Daytona Beachside Villas planned district agreement to allow development of the property as a townhome subdivision, subject to certain conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, approving the preliminary plat for the property, repealing all warranties or parts, warrants in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner Reed.
And I do have Ricardo Cruz here, who signed up to speak. That's okay, he can come in here, that's fine. Yeah.
It's okay. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, Mayor. My name is Richard Cruz. I live in 433 Goodall, on Beachside, across the street from the proposed WC Grand Townhomes. My wife and I moved to Beachside approximately five years ago. People told me that time I was crazy, but I took a chance and I have fallen in love with Daytona Beach. And I, for one, enjoy the changes I've seen in the past five years. Now, as per the development of the 17 house, townhouses, I do welcome. However, what we thought as a neighborhood, the proposed townhouses were the same ones originally proposed about five years ago, found in your packet, which looks like this. Now, there is some design found at Beach Street, which is close to here, which they look totally like beach house townhouses, which complements our area. The majority of the homes in our area, in fact, are built from the 1900s to the 1950s. The new developer has proposed an architectural elevation from the 90s, mostly found in central Florida, such as Longwood, where this company's from. This proposed elevation does not complement our neighborhood. In fact, it falls extremely short from the original plans. Miss May, this is your zone, zone three.
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you for one second. I thought you, are you on behalf of the applicant?
No, I'm actually one of the neighbors across the street, like I mentioned in the first sentence.
Okay.
And yeah, we did meet, so, okay, thank you. Now, what we want is to build the lower, it's going to basically lower our property values, which has been going up steadily since I bought the house five years ago. The proposed plan has absolutely no beach feel or vibe whatsoever, sad considering the proposed townhouses are one block away from the most famous beach. This is something that should and can be reviewed. We have the time before we start construction. Save our beach feel community, and just by considering some changes that will complement the beach community. Mr. Mayor, you yourself are a developer. And if you, pictures are a million words, you can see the difference between the original and what is now.
I'm not a developer.
This neighborhood, we're concerned about it, people around this neighborhood. As Ms. Reed said today, you up there have the control. She did say that. So all I want is to please take a look and look at what's going on, because, my friends, this does not look the same. From the original that you guys approved to this, please, I beg you to consider it. This is going to bring our values down. Even some minor changes to make it look like beach will make a difference. Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Could you hold for a second, sir?
Yes.
Could I ask a question, please? It's in zone three, so my question is this.
You can ask a question.
Thank you. It went to planning board, correct, Ms. Morris? Went to planning board, and they said what at planning board? It says here that it was 7 to 0, they approved. And what did they approve?
Work with planning and zoning. It did go to the planning board, Commissioner May, and they approved the submission made by the applicant. Now, whether this gentleman got to see the architectural renderings at the time, I can't be sure. But he's bringing to your attention the difference between an old, some middle, and a new, and I think the submission or the discussion has part been this reinstitution of what was previously there.
So my next, what can the developer do to work with the neighborhood to figure out a way through that? I know they may not need to do it, may not have to do it, but what can they do to create a better relationship in the community? And how many people do you speak for, sir?
There's approximately 10 homes around the area that we met for this meeting. And some of them are elderly, so that's why they can't come here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
So the architectural details are in fact that. You have what I would consider to be the bones of the building, the superstructure of the building. You can give the architectural treatment that you wish to give, and there's probably some differences as it relates to eaves, window treatments, roof lines, that sort of thing. But effectively, the space it's occupied by people inside can be what's there. It's the veneer or the surface treatments that are given to it. I know Mr. Storch is here for the applicant, he may want to speak further in respect to that. But you can certainly change dressing on the outer part, and I believe that's what the gentleman is talking.
You want this?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Storch, he's been raising his hand, the attorney.
We'll hear from him.
Okay.
Okay. He's giving her something.
Okay. Is there...
It's what?
It's the, I want to know if we're all looking at the same thing. Is this what we all have in terms of what you have, what you've seen?
I can't see that well enough, no.
Okay, so it's the elevation from Grand, do you have elevation?
That's the original.
That's the original. So that's what the planning board saw?
Yeah, now they got that.
There's a difference.
That needs to go to Storch.
Hey, I'm sorry.
I'm just verifying that that's actually what is happening there.
This comes from City Hall, that, all that paperwork. It just doesn't look the same, Mr. Mayor. And I know what you're trying to do for the city, and it just doesn't comply with your vision is.
Well, I didn't, I didn't want to look at this apart from the commission, really. I just think, I don't know what it is, yeah.
And I'll put it into the record.
It's short, Mr. Storch. It's like almost, providing evidence in their situation, we don't know if it's verifiable or what. These people, okay.
Chairman, until you tell me to sit down, I'll sit down if you're finished with it.
Well, I would recommend, this is first read?
No.
Second?
No, second.
Second.
Well, it's too late.
Hmm?
Yeah.
That's from...
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you.
May I ask him some questions? Okay, sir, thank you. Your time is up. Your time is up.
He said he could make some minor changes, you're not gonna even accept that?
Your time is up, I'm not saying that we have to hear from the applicant here. He, he, you're saying that they can make minor changes, is that what you're saying?
He said that my opinion is that it's possible, it isn't that if we sat down and put pen to paper, but the superstructure of the building, I would expect is similar from size, is basically a similar size, that's really the finish of the building, not the construction of the, is what I believe. That's why I think they should have the applicant as well.
Okay.
Because it's my opinion, that's only what it.
Now, that's his opinion, he doesn't work for the developer. The applicant is here. Uh, we've heard what you've said, and now we'll speak with him.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, thank you, committee.
Thank you, okay.
My name is Glenn Storch, and I've been representing the applicant in this case from the beginning, and I will tell you to start with, the, the plan that you're seeing, that we've shown everybody, is the exact same plan that, that has been throughout. We haven't changed anything. This has been the plan.
Yeah, but, but let me ask you, how long has that been? Is this, he's talking about a previous plan?
No, well, the previous plan was, uh, there was a previous PUD years ago, that had this, that was not able to be built, possibly because it didn't fly, I mean, it wouldn't, there was no market for it. That was then changed to single family. That didn't fly, and so now we have someone who's willing to actually build these facilities, and we've worked together with staff, we've worked together with the redevelopment board, we've worked together with the planning board, to get what the city is looking for. This is, these are $275,000 units to start with. So I think you need to understand that this is not gonna devalue that neighborhood, this will enhance that neighborhood tremendously. This is about a five million dollar project, ninety-one thousand dollars a year in ad valour and taxes because of this, and we have someone willing to actually build it. That's the important thing as well. Now, as far as the design, if he wants something that seems a little beachy, if that's his concern, we can work as far as changing some of the colors to create a more beachy feel to this. That's not the issue. If this is just looking too normal, we can work on that, that's not a problem. I can't go back to the original design, of course, because again, that original design's never been through planning board, it's never been through redevelopment board, never been through staff. Staff recommended approval, planning board recommended approval unanimously, and redevelopment board recommended approval, and of course, we had the first reading. So we're at the stage now where this project is, has been vetted by everyone, and everyone loved the project. And, and by the way, I also had a, a neighborhood meeting with some great people, and we listened to them, and we listened to what they were saying. I never heard any questions whatsoever regarding this design. This design was even brought up during that neighborhood meeting. The neighborhood meeting's concern, biggest concern was short-term rental. We wanna make sure there's no short-term rentals on this site. I said, fine, I can do that, we can take care of that. We made sure there was no short-term rentals permitted in the PUD, uh, there are no short-term rentals permitted in the zoning, there will not be short-term rentals on this site. So we did everything possible with the redevelopment, with the neighborhood meeting we had. I, this guy, I mean, I, he seems like a very, uh, earnest person, I'm sure he's very informed as to his neighborhood, a great thing, we wanna be part of the neighborhood, but if his concern is this just doesn't feel beachy enough, we can work together to make it a little beachier with some, with some colors and some amenities as part of it. But this is a great project, this is a enclave redevelopment project, this is the sort of thing that the city loves, which is why the city staff recommended this, this is why this is so important for this neighborhood, and it will in fact increase the value of this neighborhood tremendously.
Okay. Do we have any questions of Mister Storch?
Storch, uh, one more time, where did we get the two drawings from? Before, there was a previous drawing and then the current one. So the residents, when they said, we're all on board, which is a fantastic project.
Correct.
We're all on board, what were they approving? Were they approving what we're seeing?
The present drawing.
They all approved that when you went to the neighborhood meeting?
Everyone saw the present drawing, the redevelopment board saw the present drawing, the planning board saw the present drawing. I have never used the previous drawing. That was probably part of the staff, uh, the staff, uh, report that showed that there was in fact a previous PUD down there, but I never used that previous drawing.
And do you recall, or do you have documentation of how many people were at the meetings that you had?
Uh, it was a Zoom meeting, as you can imagine. There was probably seven or eight folks there. I mean, I remember Ann being there, uh, but I mean, it was, it was well-known, and, and in fact, like I say, I've, I've done everything that they've asked me to do since that time, and we've tried to follow through, and again, if I had known there was an, an issue with this, I would've said, sure, we can, we can, we can do some tweaks to, to fix this, and I've got the, the owner right here who will be doing this, and he just told me, yeah, we can, can do some painting, some other things to make this more beachy, if that's what you want. Again, our, our desire is to make this marketable. The most important thing right now is to build this so that you have that neighborhood enhanced, so that you have money coming into that neighborhood, so you have $275,000 building or homes coming to that neighborhood, which is so important.
Mister Storch, what was on the lot before?
I beg your pardon?
What was there before?
It's, uh, it's funny, because right now, it is an, a, a, if you've seen it in your, may not see it in your staff report, but it is a blank lot with the infrastructure actually own it. So I've got the, the, uh, driveways and, uh, utilities in the site, ready for this to go in.
And how long has it been essentially a vacant lot with infrastructure?
It's been sitting like that for a decade, I don't know. Yeah, years and years.
Mister Mayor, this is property the city owned. The city had bought this property because it was a dilapidated piece of property that took away from the entire neighborhood. We spent the time and money to go buy it. We sold it to a developer that couldn't, was unable to process the, you know, the project because they couldn't get the market to, to fund their project, so, and now this gentleman's bought it, and, but, uh, there's, it, it was, what it is today is much better than it was when we started.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, as far as depreciation, it's, uh, gonna be an appreciation in the area, it's gonna add things to the tax roll, and I can't imagine it would, the property values would be anything but positively affected to go from a vacant lot, right? So that's what I was just trying to ascertain, that for the last thirteen years or so, this has been a vacant lot with infrastr, with, with infrastructure on it. Okay, thanks, that was my question. That's, which, which looks like it needs to be, have something there, and nothing's been going there.
And, and the average house adjacent to that is probably not $275,000?
My understanding from when I had my neighborhood meeting is they were thrilled with the idea that these houses were gonna, these new homes were gonna go in, and the prices we were asking for them.
Okay.
And the planning board did see the same?
Oh, absolutely.
We did.
The redevelopment board saw the exact same plan, the planning board saw the exact same plan. I would've showed you a, a PowerPoint today, as a matter of fact, but I couldn't get the PowerPoint in within your forty-eight hour limitation. I have, uh, color renderings if you'd like to see them, uh, but I mean, the bottom line is.
I would like to see it.
If the painting is an issue, like I say, if the, if you want it more beachside, I'll work with this gentleman.
Is that a commitment, sir?
Yeah.
Is that a commitment, Mister Storch?
Uh, yes, that is, that's a.
Let's commission a ma'am over here, that's a commitment.
Absolutely, ma'am. Again, I've always found that when you have a neighborhood, you have a new project in a neighborhood, you want the neighborhood to be happy if you can, because these are some of your best sellers.
I'm familiar with the property, I'm familiar with the area, I'm familiar with the neighborhood, and they have a certain look, they have a certain look in the, in the building structures.
Right.
Right? And I think they wanna keep that cohesiveness so you're blending in with the surrounding community.
Uh, I have this last one, sure.
Actually, this should bring up the property value.
That's okay.
Totally.
Right.
Totally. Yes, if you know that area, um, that's why I asked that question. $275,000 units compared to the value of the units there, I was just there yesterday, driving that whole area, or something that I will ask you all to consider later, at another meeting, probably not now.
I have found that to get people to invest these older neighborhoods is not easy.
Yes.
And when you do it, it'd be, it's, it starts a chain reaction of other people investing. So that's why I was so pleased that we had this happening. And we've worked out, and again, I, I, we've had nothing but positive reactions from all the boards we've been before so far.
Could you take a moment, don't know if we can do this, and spend a few moments with the gentleman outside to find out what compromise you can reach, or what you can include into your strategy?
If, if the mayor is okay with that, I'd.
And I'm sorry, can you use the microphone, Mister Storch?
I'm sorry, if the mayor is okay with giving him that time, I'd be glad to.
Well.
Thanks. I know.
I, I don't know what strategy you can come up with outside in five minutes.
He already said he would work with.
You're gonna work with him?
On the color scheme.
Yeah.
On the color scheme, and that's.
Yeah, Commissioner, what I will, what I give you is my.
Bring up the property value over there.
Yeah, Commissioner, I will give you my promise, I mean, it'll be the basic structure, but we can do things where we can, where we can make it more beachy, and we'll be glad to work with him after, after the meeting to do that.
Yeah, yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna ask you to go out and do that.
I, I appreciate that.
Okay.
And, and I, and I will tell you one thing, he was just saying, saying the same thing. You know, we can also add things with landscaping, we can use certain beach material, uh, beach plant material, sea grapes, et cetera, to, all these things will help create this feeling of, of a beach community, and that's important for us too, because again, that's good marketing.
Yeah, okay, uh, well, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any other questions?
I think it's a really good project, I'm glad someone's doing something there. Seven to eight homes in a small community represents a lot of people. My hope is that you will try to work with the residents who need to be made more comfortable with the way it looks, because again, seven to eight homes is a lot, so.
You always have my promise for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I really like it, I, I do think it is, uh, I can understand the gentleman's point as well on the beach side and its new development. If you're willing to work with them, I, I'm definitely gonna support the project if you could make it a little more beachy.
Do we have any other comments? All right, thank you, we appreciate this project, I, I'm supportive, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero, and this is a positive sign for the beach side. We've had, this is a, this is a project, we've wanted to see something positive there ever since I, shortly after I got involved in public life in this way, so I appreciate it. And this is elevating that, just like the project we did a few months ago, guys, on A1A. Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number nine C, it's the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Land Development Code text amendment, this is use specific standards, this is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending section 5.2.2b of Article 5 of the Land Development Code to amend use specific standards for institutional, daycare uses, industrial, manufacturing and production uses, and industrial warehousing and freight movement uses, repealing all warranties or parts of warranties in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second, do we have any questions?
I have no speakers for this item, Mister Mayor.
Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay. Moving on to item nine D, it's the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Daytona Beach VA OPC PD, rezoning to Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone seventy-six point one plus or minus acres of property generally located on the west side of North Williamson Boulevard, approximately eighteen hundred feet north of LPGA Boulevard, from Volusia County R2 Urban Single Family Residential, to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Daytona Beach VA OPC Plan District Agreement, authorizing development of the property with an outpatient clinic for the Departments of Veterans Affairs and/or other commercial and medical uses, subject to certain conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all warranties or parts of warranties in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved, second.
Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Can't Two, second from Commissioner Delgado.
Okay. I do have Mister Jeff Brock here, representing the applicant for any questions.
All right, we have any questions? All right, we, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item nine E. Is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Public Use Permit, Heinemann Street Potable Water Ground Storage Tank and Pump Station. This is a resolution quasi judicial hearing. A resolution authorizing a public use permit for a city-owned property located at Severn Hundred Heinemann Street to construct a new 5.0 MG ground storage tank, high service pumps and associated equipment, paved site access, electrical controls, stormwater management and associated site improvements, waiving certain provisions from Article 4, 6, and 7 of the Land Development Code, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Motion carries, I mean, motion by Commissioner Delgado, second by Commissioner May, excuse me.
That's okay, and I do have a speaker on this item, Mister Mayor, Mister Frederick Brown.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Crystal Ridge, Daytona Beach. Unfortunately, I was only alerted to this item relatively recently, and as a retired engineer, spent a great deal of time in water and wastewater, and visited a number and worked at a number of these types of locations. I only recently got a chance to speak to the residents involved here because the notification only went out to residents within three hundred feet. And I can assure you with my years of experience, the sound goes well beyond that. I would request additional time to review the, the, the plans. My concern is the green belting, or lack thereof, and the sound, uh, deadening provisions that are made in this. Far too often have I seen a water treatment plant and tank, and I do understand the need, trust me, I do understand it, and like I say, I, I made it part of my career. There's a right way and a wrong way to do it, and the citizens that live in this area, as I understand it, not very many of them even bothered showing up to the meeting. The complaints will start when the construction begins. These facilities tend to put out a great deal of noise, variable speed pumps, which are typically what's used in these, and again, I haven't seen the full plan yet, and I hope to do so, especially during the morning and evening hours when they ramp up and down, you'll hear frequency changes in the pumps, and they do resonate. You also have to have the infrastructure for the power. Now again, I haven't had a chance to see the blueprints, I would like to see it, and I would like to meet together with some of the citizens I've already spoken with. So what I'm requesting is that we do a table on this to a future meeting, do not approve it right now, I understand it, the need for it, but I would like to see the citizens of Daytona Beach, especially the residents in that area who are gonna be greatly affected, that most of them don't even realize it until it's built, that we provide for the noise abatement, and also the, uh, associated services that go along with this need to be done with least amount of impact to the local residents. Again, I do appreciate the need, I just think we need to go a little bit more in the depth, perhaps add a little bit to this for the green belting and the sound abatement. Thank you. My request is to table.
Mister Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This is a, just a, a, uh, public use permit, it's not the design phase and all of those issues, it really will be addressed at the time we get into the, um, projects that'll bring plans back to you for, for approval.
So when you come back with a plan for approval, we would be able to not accept it if it doesn't meet the standards of not being too noisy and creating a disruption of the community? Okay, this is just a plan. Uh, all right, we have a motion and a second, do we have any other questions? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. Motion carries, seven zero.
Moving on to nine F. The Public Works Technical Services Division Preliminary and Final Platte, approval for the Blake. This is a resolution quasi judicial. A resolution approving the preliminary and final plat for the Blake, a single-lot subdivision for a senior living facility located north of the northeast corner of LPGA Boulevard and Williamson Boulevard, authorizing the city manager to sign the final plat and permit recordation there upon meeting certain conditions precedent and providing an effective date.
So moves.
Motion by Commissioner Delgado, second by Commissioner May.
And I do have Ms. Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
All right. Do we have any questions on Ms. Gao? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay. Moving on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item 10A is the Human Resources Department Implementation of Money Purchase Retirement Plan 401A for eligible sworn police officers and firefighters. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving a money purchase retirement plan 401A for sworn police officers and firefighters who accrue the maximum monthly benefit in the police officers and firefighters retirement plan on or after June 1, 2021, and establishing required employee and employer contribution rates for the plan, approving the ICMA Retirement Corporation Governmental Money Purchase Plan Trust Agreement, ICMA Retirement Corporation Governmental Money Purchase Plan Adoption Agreement, and Administrative Services Agreement with the International City Management Association, ICMA Retirement Corporation, and implementation of the plan, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreements, authorizing future amendments to the agreements to be approved by resolution, and providing an effective date.
So moves. Second.
Well, a motion from Commissioner Trager and a second from Commissioner Delgado. All right, do we have any questions? No questions? All those in favor?
I don't have the number.
Oh, sorry.
Is Mrs. Sexton here?
Your, your mic.
Thank you. Oh, my little flashing. So, Mr. Sexton, when was this cap put into place and why?
The pension cap, is that what you refer to, the 5,500? So in 2011 and 2012, through collective bargaining with the unit at the time that represented the police officers and sergeants, negotiated some reductions in pension benefits, and one of those was, the cap was established. And in 2012, through the collective bargaining impasse procedure, the cap was imposed on the fire unit as well.
Okay. And was the cost of living factored into this when we, when we factored into the cap?
The cap was established based on, I believe, the maximum tenant rate of pay for police officer units and also within the fire units. And it was to establish a cap that would not move, so your cost of what a pension max could be would then be established. And there was no CPI adjustment or any type of adjustment to the cap put into the ordinance.
Would you, would you say that the cap has affected our hiring of police and firemen?
No, I would not.
Okay. You know, this came before us, and then I guess I think you got ill, and then we didn't have it at the time. Is, is there a reason why this is suddenly an issue?
Suddenly an issue, I would say, is because there are at least two police officers within the higher ranks that have accrued the maximum level benefits. And for them, you know, when their 10% comes out of their check each week going into a pension fund where they don't believe they're accruing additional benefits, they feel like that they're paying into a fund and not getting a return for that. So in effect, what we're doing is establishing a secondary pension for them. Once you attain the cap in the defined benefit plan, then we're gonna put you in a 401 plan to then supplement, have a second retirement through the city.
I know we've already lost one officer because of this recently. One of our deputy chiefs left because he didn't see the potential in this being a benefit to him. What is the cost of removing the cap for us?
So it's, it would be roughly between $8 and $10 million to, to open the cap totally. And that's based off of the actuary reports in 2011 and 2012 establishing what the projected savings were gonna be going forward, to the tune of about a half a million in the police side and about $300,000 in the fireside, and then multiply that by about 10 years. That's kind of where we're, kind of where we're at here. If we wanted to go backwards and repay what, you know, hasn't been contributed over those years, and then prospective, of course.
Do you think this discourages employees from wanting to go into higher ranks because of this cap?
I don't believe so. What it, what it could do, if I, well, one, I believe this is a fix. So now, not only will you have $66,000 for life as a 43-year-old, if you were retired after the 20 years, this would then put you into a 401A plan. So your, your pension benefit stays in effect. Now, I'm gonna put you in a 401 play where, plan where the employee will contribute 9% and the employer will contribute 10%. So if you're making six figures, which captains and above typically are and lieutenants after some overtime, they'll be putting in, you know, $19,000 a year will be going into this 401, and you've already established your $66,000 pension benefit. Now, you're establishing a 401A, 401A account and being an active member of both plans. When you get to where you want to retire in five years, you can enter drop in the police and fire pension plan. So your, your pension benefit starts, but it goes into a drop account that earns interest every year. So at the end of your five-year drop, if you're at the cap, you're gonna have roughly about $400, $450,000 in your drop account. That is your money when you exit in five years. In the meantime, you're also contributing to the 401, and the city's contributing to the 401, so you could have roughly $200,000 in there. So at 53 years old, you could have $66,000 pension benefit plus COLAs for life, 2% COLAs after the sixth year, 450 cash in a, in a drop account, and 200 cash in a 401 account. And because they're public safety, the early withdrawal for 401's account is 50 years of age instead of the standard 59 and a half for non-public safety.
Okay. What are we doing for those who have already lost? Because in talking, it's my understanding that, and you've even indicated that two or three people are, are at the max. Are we trying to do anything for them when we do this switchover for having already given this money into the cap?
So the short answer is, even though they've continued to contribute, the benefits aren't paid for. However, we have met with those particular employees and the city manager, and we are working toward remedies to see if there are ways to remedy what has already been contributed to the plan after the time from which they attained or accrued the maximum level benefit.
On both sides, fire and police?
There's no one on the fireside at this point. There's only two command staff-level employees on the police side. Fewer are bumping up to it. They'll be there soon.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, you know, I guess if there's a sense of urgency, it's because there's two there right now, and then some more on the way.
Okay. Are both unions in agreement with what we're moving on tonight?
So the short answer to that is no. The lieutenant unit is on board because it affects their members more so. Certainly, the command staff's on board because it affects them, but the rank-and-file unit did not want to do it because their position was, we're not looking to help management, so we're not gonna agree to that.
Was that from both units, unions with that command staff?
Yes.
Okay.
So they would just assume management continued to pay into their part.
Correct.
With no benefit to them.
Correct, with no additional accrue.
If I could jump in on top of Commissioner Reed, I, I, I mean, I think we should make, I feel like we owe something to the people that have worked, that are, had that cap, that have basically, I don't, I don't know, I don't wanna, I have to be careful, I choose my words. I know there's an argument made that they have paid in, so they're, it's not that they're getting nothing for their contribution. Their position is they're not. I understand there's some analysis that supports our position that they are getting something for it. They're certainly paying into a fund they would benefit from, et cetera. But I think for those people, since there's not a lot of them, and I think we should make a commitment to them as a commission that they will be, that they will be taken care of, and it will be made, you know, right, so to speak. Or then, right may need some fine tuning, but I mean, that, that, that's my hope as a commissioner, is that they'll be taken care of, right? Sorry.
You, you saying you're addressing, you are referring to the money that they've paid in, and that's it? An amount that we could determine what that was and then maybe come to some agreement or something?
Yes, so, so we have talked to those employees, and even after I spoke with the city manager about some ideas that he had when we were talking, there, there's certainly some options we can make. We can, we can adjust the annual salary in those particular employees, and then over the course of the next three to five years, they would make up that back money that would have been paid in there. There's a way to pay them a lump sum if we wanted to try to do that.
I just want to do a lump sum. We cut everything when they're capped, so they're whole at this point. And that's not something we can't do.
Well, you don't wanna say that.
Yeah. What I suggested, and I've already, I think I've mentioned it to them when we were in the meeting, that we should bring them, make them whole at the point that we adopt this, so that anything they paid in they didn't get credit for, we make up the difference and put it, put it in place.
That's what I think.
That was my recommendation at the time.
So do you need commission approval to make that a thing, or is that, I mean, because I would like to amend the motion.
Want you to amend the motion, allow me to do that.
I'd like to amend the motion.
I think Trager was the motion, and you were the second.
Okay. I'm agreeable.
Okay. So we're gonna amend the motion to?
Authorize.
To backpay the officers for their pension contribution that was above and beyond the accrued benefit of the pension cap. Right.
And, and you'll do that just through a straight payment, or is there a way to do that to help them with their taxes, or some, some?
Tax exempt.
It'll be tax exempt?
Won't this be tax exempt? I don't, I don't believe it'll be income tax, so.
It's gonna be.
It won't be pre-tax either. It'll be, when you pay a lump sum like that, it's automatically taxed at 22%. Any lump sum payment that in. Let's look at it, I got some ideas about that.
Okay. If you guys would, you know, look at it to see that you can do it to the best benefit.
That's why I was looking at putting in the salary, because they could defer it to a 457 in addition to 401. They could tax defer it. That gives it tax exempt.
That's what I'm thinking, something like that.
So, we could do a, a income adjustment, they defer that tax deferred over a couple of years, it makes up, it's pre-taxed, goes into that, and, I mean, there's more than one way, and City Manager, I can certainly.
That, we'll leave that to you.
If you're giving us the authority per the motion, we can come up with a solution that they're happy with and the city can.
I just want the cat scanned, I don't care how the cat gets scanned.
Right. Exactly.
Okay. But I want it in the best interest of them, and there's a lot of ways. If you just make it one way, you know, and the two of them might have something different.
I hear you.
Maybe a different, this works for me, this works for me.
The amount is significantly different between the two. One's been for quite some time, and one just hit it in May of 20, I believe, which is some time. But, but when you talk about 10% of the salary, the number isn't huge compared to the one. The other one's got a pretty big number.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there, you got a motion, got a second? Have any other questions?
So this would be the process from then on, we're getting ready to this cap thing?
I think we came around, yes, we are. But you were talking, are you good?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
The public hearing is set for April 21st. Moving on to item 10B. It's the Human Resources Department Police and Fire Pension Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance of the City of Daytona Beach amending the City of Daytona Beach Police Officers and Firefighters Retirement System, Subpart D of the City Charter, amending section 5 contributions by amending the member contribution to 0.50% once the member has accrued the maximum monthly pension benefit cap, providing for codification, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moves.
We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions?
Is this just a necessary corollary to A, or to, I'm sorry?
Technically, A was a necessary corollary to this. This is changing the police and fire pension plan that once you attain the cap, your contribution goes to 0.5, and then the, what we just voted on was what does, happens to your money at that point.
Okay, all right.
So this is just the pension ordinance to make their pension contribution go to 0.5% once they attain the max level benefit of 5,500 a month.
Do you need anything from us to implement the directive from the first part to the, here, from A?
No, sir.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
The public hearing is set for April 21st.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk, could I ask a question? The question I have is, when we were earlier on item 6A, I'm sorry, I had a motion on the floor. What happened with it? Could we just check the record? I believe I made a motion in my original statement.
6A for what?
I made a motion at that time.
That, that was your presentation, and you didn't, there wasn't a motion because you weren't asking for.
I did.
Bob answered. Go ahead.
Yeah, if you recall, Commissioner May, I asked at that point if, if that was a public records request, or whether you were stating that in the form of a motion, and you indicated at that time that it was a public records request.
But my question was, at the time, though, would I have to take it back, just as a point?
Your motion was actually not seconded.
So did we take A, did we even go that far?
So your motion, essentially, it was not a motion because it was not seconded, and it was converted to a public records request, which Ms. LaMagna will respond to.
But I thought she didn't make a motion. You said she didn't need a motion.
Well, that, that's true. You indicated you were essentially.
Do I have to remove anything, just for procedural?
We'll take care of the public records request.
You, you have to give them a public records request?
I haven't done that.
I've taken that.
We've already got it.
She's already.
You stated it.
She stated it, and that I'm taking.
Okay.
Okay. I just want to be sure I have a motion hanging out there that, but it got no second, so. Okay.
It would have, it, it didn't carry anyway, or it would have died, they didn't second it. Okay.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to item 10C. It's a Public Works Technical Service Division Bebel Road Trail LAP Agreement. This is a resolution. A resolution approving a Florida Local Agency Program LAP Agreement with the State of Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, providing for reimbursement to the city of an amount not to exceed $1,393,136 for the construction of an 8 to 12-foot wide concrete multi-use path along the south side of Bebel Road from Andrews Island Boulevard to Clyde Morris Boulevard, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, authorizing amendment of the applicable fiscal year budget and expenditure of all funds awarded, authorizing the city manager to execute any related documents required to be executed by the agreement, and providing an effective date. So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. We have speakers on this item?
I do have speakers on this item. Our first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Ann Ruby.
Yeah, it's expensive. Go ahead.
John Nicholson, with regard to this, oh, 413 North Grammy Avenue. With regard to this item about sidewalks, the more we have, the better. I'm sure you all remember, and it wasn't specifically for this, but there was a death out on my first step shelter. There are no sidewalks out there. Wherever we have people going, walking, we really don't want them walking in the roads. Major roads are a hazard. Our neighborhood, if we don't have sidewalks, that's relatively okay, because the traffic is not there, and the traffic is not going extremely fast. We just put a sidewalk that they waited, apparently, for a long time, of Clyde Morris in Zone 5. So what we do to one area in the city, we have to do to the other. I'm asking you, we're getting a million dollars' help with this. We need it. I'm asking you to support it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm in support and urge, urge you to approve it because of the, it's a significant effort on the part of the city to make this happen, it's on a state road, the state let us kind, kind of down the path and said, okay, we'll participate with you, but then when it came down to actually doing it, they kind of rolled the money somewhere else, so it's, uh, I wouldn't want to lose this project. But it runs all the way from, uh, 95, almost 95, all the way back to Clyde Morris, there is no other sidewalk or path that I know of that gets you back that far safely, and certainly we would recommend we go forward.
That's a long way. Okay. Uh, it, well, first thing is, it, it tells us just how expensive, uh, a project like this is, uh, and we all know how important sidewalks are, and it's not a matter of speaking to, well, I'm, I'm sorry, Ann, forgot about you. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue, I'd like to speak in favor of this project, um, it first came before you in, I think, November of 2016, so it's been four and a half years to get to this point, and I think it, it's a great project to go forward. When I was raising my children, we had a bus, it was called Bus Number 11, it was your two legs, and often people are told, need to take Bus Number 11, and if you don't have a sidewalk, you can't ride Bus Number 11 comfortably and safely, so I would urge passage of this because it will make walking out there safer and better for everyone who lives out there. Thank you.
Okay. All right, um.
I have no other speakers.
No other speakers, anyone else want to speak to this item? I, I have a lot to say about it, but is there any other comments?
Yeah. I would like to see it passed because I know this was, um, in 2016, November, November 2016, it was passed, and actually, I didn't even know about it, and I've lived in Pelican Bay since 90, 1999, and I was told by the residents, but it, we just finished the sidewalk on Clyde Morris, so if we start from Williamson, this is going to take them all the way down to Dunlott with sidewalks. So, it, it's, and plus.
Cannot do it.
You live where I live, you see them walking on the side of the road to Publix constantly, and it's very dangerous.
Commissioner Henry?
I'm in full support of this project tonight, um, I, I believe the more sidewalks anywhere in the city, the better, and the safer, uh, I remember a few years back, Gilliland talked about the, my, FDOT for sidewalk in, in my, my particular zone over there that needs sidewalks desperately, is there any information on that, or?
Charles. In the years, the one on Sixth Street, and that Sixth Street goes all the way back to Nova Road?
Mm-hmm, not, not the area, we toured the other day on Vine.
No, no.
No, yeah.
Yeah, not Vine Street, the other way. East and West, yes, we do, that project, I think, is in design, is it, is it in design, Mr. Waller?
No, no.
Waller, Deputy Public Works Director, there's two projects in your, in your general area, Commissioner Henry, and, uh, one, one section is completed, designed, the other one is at 90%, I have to check on the exact status of construction, but they are moving forward, I'm, just like this project started in 2016, it takes a horrendous amount of time to get them through the DOT process, and we're almost home with the two in your zone, and this one is ready as well.
Thank you.
Is one of them on her zone, Vine, like, from, what is that, like Berkshire to past YSG?
One of them is, uh, yes, ma'am, comes along Vine.
Well, YSG was, is a different one, yeah.
But she's talking about the one on Sixth, it runs all the way to Nova.
I think that's the first, first one that's coming in the queue, is the ones that connect the west route, and then there's one that comes up Vine and does, uh.
Yeah, Vine's the other one.
Yeah, I never understood how we built a center and didn't have a sidewalk for people to get to it.
For the children, yeah.
Yes, for the children, okay, very good.
That's, that's the one, that Vine one is at 90%, it kicked back around again for another set of DOT reviews, and, and it'll come out as well.
Great, thank you, Mr. Waller.
As the member of the TPO, I will say that the conversation at TPO seems to be that there will be a shortage of funds gradually over time, and so it's good that we're kind of thinking ahead and thinking how we can help ourselves through this to get some of the improvements that we want.
They feel that it will be a shortage of funds over time?
Yeah, so, exactly, only because of the traffic, the lack of some of the taxes that are going on right now, they're slowing down some of the projects, and that was as of the last meeting, I keep doing checkups on East ISB, it's still on track, we're still talking about Mason, I'm starting to ask questions about Seabreeze, but as we have other projects in mind, we have to keep in mind, we may have to start self-funding to a greater extent, and just be prepared for that, to get some of the things we want.
Okay, well, I, I want to speak to just how important the project is, and I did look at it five times and kept looking at the price, but I knew the price, but I want to say to the public that we have to know how much it costs, you're not talking about a road, but you are talking about a significant stretch, but you're talking about a sidewalk, but it's, in a lot of ways, it's as important or more important than a road, because the, in order for us to do as she said, use Number 11, uh, you have to have the infrastructure for folks to be able to access it, and I'm just really excited about the connectivity of it all, and it just sends a message that this is important to us, and so, these are the things that, you know, we have to be able to fund, and I'm, I'm glad that we're able to do it.
I'd like to have an extra, a side. Right, an extra little bicycle kind of situation, too, are we going to do anything with the roads, or just the sidewalk?
Actually, were you talking about the road up there?
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, in 2022, they're getting ready to resurface the road up there, so I think it'll probably happen about the same time.
Okay, it just might be something to start thinking about as we start thinking about.
It's a 12-foot, you want to tell them?
It is, that's what I say, 12-foot.
Yeah. Correct, they're going to do some resurfacing, scheduled, they'll add some bike lanes, but the sidewalk for the, all the way from Williamson back to shore to Clyde is 12 feet, there's ample room for that, so it'll be a multi-use trail.
Just in the future, we keep getting more information about micro mobility devices, will they be able to access that, do you think? With, will we be able to use micro mobility devices as we start planning infrastructure, kind of planning for the future, for scooters or mopeds, is that part of it that we could use?
They, I mean, they, 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 I guess, I would resume they'd be permitted on Bevel, they should not be ridden on the sidewalk, not in motorized devices.
Okay, thank you.
And micro mobility devices are prohibited in the city absent a franchise agreement, which we have none.
Okay, we're going to vote on this, I guess, now, but after, before we vote on it, I want to say this while we're on this topic, because we've got to deal with strategic planning. Aside from affordable housing, you know, I would hope that as we go into this season for strategic planning, that a comprehensive road and sidewalk program and project, you know, throughout the city would be our, our greatest priority, we have to, you know, our, the half-cent sales tax didn't pass, but it didn't abate the need, and so, you know, I think we really need to hone in on that as we start our planning, and I hope staff, is, is ready to, to do that and find some creative ways to help us get some things funded throughout the city.
Along those lines, I need to mention that, um, it looks like the county is proposing to reduce the amount of funds that we'll get from the, uh, tax, gasoline tax, uh, that is shared between all the cities, uh, they changed the formula as a result of some of the other cities wanting to change the formula so that, uh, the mix got changed, and it looks like we're going to get, uh, initially, we'll, we'll have a reduction in the amount of money we'll get from the county for that purpose, but I think long-term, because it's, uh, the formula includes lane miles, construction, as new miles of roads are, are built within the city's subdivisions that are coming up, that's, it'll probably keep, get us back up somewhere to the, where we are today, but we're going to lose some initially.
Lose some initially, but, okay, and so, okay, um, one of the things I'll add to this conversation is, um, we talk about Buc-E's, but it, uh, was mentioned by County Councilman, uh, Chair Brower when we were at Buc-E's, uh, and I thought it was an astute observation, that the fact that we have 104 gas stations there, while it does cost us a great deal in terms of traffic, and to some degree, quality of life for those of us who live out there, but most of us also like going to Buc-E's, so in ways that it takes away, we get quality of life in that way, but I want to say that those 104 stick pumps equates to, you know, really about 10 gas stations, you know, and that means enhanced gas taxes for us, you know, and so.
We don't get them.
I know we don't get them, and it's straight to us, but, you know, it, it was, um, but it, it was an astute observation, anyway, um, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, seven zero.
Moving on to item 10D, it is the Development and Administrative Services Request for Proposal to Solicite a Study and Recommendations to Encourage Affordable Housing in the City, Resolution, a resolution author, authorizing city staff to issue a request for proposals to retain a consultant to develop an affordable housing plan and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed, who's the second?
Commissioner May.
Okay.
And I do have one speaker, Mr. Mayor, Mr. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue, about 35 years ago, um, there was an opportunity to get the Ladies Professional Golf Association into the City of Daytona Beach, um, there was a need for affordable housing with the LPGA project, and when we did that, one of the groups in the neighborhood, uh, in the City of Daytona Beach, requested that we exclude all the housing in the City of Daytona Beach when we did the search for affordable housing for this project, there's a state law that you have to have so many affordable housing whenever you build a large project, I'm asking you that when you do this, one, we determine whether we're doing workforce housing or affordable housing, they're two different things, so that these people, if they're looking at something, we know what they're looking at, we know what we're going to get, and that all of our housing be included, all of our hut housing is included, all our condos are included, all our trailers, if we have any, are included, there are ways to, to rig this, to get what the, the mayor wants, so I'm asking you to make sure that this is an up and above board RFP, to find out what our housing actually is, and define whether we're doing affordable housing or workforce housing, they are different, thank you.
Okay.
That was my only speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, okay, who's the, uh, who's, who's presenting on this? You have a motion and a second? Do we have any questions of this?
I believe it was, uh.
Okay, yeah, you have a question? No question? Okay, we have a motion and a second, I'm, I know what it is.
Did you want to say something?
Okay, all right, we know what we're doing with this, right, okay, all right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Moving on to item 10E, it's a Legal Department City Manager Employment Agreement Approval Resolution, a resolution appointing Derek C. Fiecher to the Office of City Manager of the City of Daytona Beach, effective June 1st, 2021, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an employment agreement setting forth the terms and conditions of Mr. Fiecher's employment, requiring Mr. Fiecher to reside within the city and providing an effective date.
So moved.
All right, uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Reed, a second from Commissioner Henry.
And I do have one public speaker on this item, Mr. Mayor, if you want to take that first, uh, Mr. John Nicholson.
Mayor, while we're waiting for Mr. Nicholson, I want to point out that you have in your packet, um, a highlighted version, which Commissioner Delgado will be speaking to tonight, uh, it's consistent with what was previously provided, but the highlights are meant to point your attention, your attention to this salient, uh, terms of the agreement, also there's a second sheet, uh, which has some red line changes from the draft that was provided to you in your packet, so those will all be discussed by Commissioner Delgado.
Okay. Mr. Nicholson?
Uh, John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue, I attended the meeting that, uh, Mr. Delgado had, uh, with the attorney, uh, with regard to this, um, item, the only thing I have that I ask you to do and make public, I know Delgado mentioned it on the, uh, Mark Benier Show, but the amount of money, apparently, there are four or five people making over $200,000, uh, from what I understand from the show, was that we had to pay him this amount because other people are making that amount, uh, so Jim Morris and, uh, the, the city attorney and whatever are making over $200,000, so therefore, we have to start Mr. Fiecher at $207,000 or whatever it is, all right? It's a done deal in, in that sense, but I ask you to look at all of the high-end, and if we have too many, I know with Mr. Fiecher coming in, things are going to change, but I think, Jim, the last, was it, uh, 2007, we did a, uh, search on what employees make and whether we're paying appropriately, I think we need to go to that again, I've heard from several people that we are very top-heavy in terms of, uh, department heads, uh, high-end people, so we are paying, uh, a great deal of money at a very high level, and that the people at the lower end are not making the funds that they would comparably match with other cities, so although you're doing Mr. Fiecher, and that we have to pay him appropriately, there's no room to grow, because once you start the 5% or 8% increases, he's going to be at $300,000 before he leaves here, so I'm asking you to, um, to, if you can, lower it just a little bit, so that he has room to grow, uh, with his finances, thank you.
That was my only speaker on this item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Present this now?
Yeah, well, it's, it's, yes, sir.
Thank you, um, so, what we did at your request was the city attorney and I, uh, worked together to present an employment agreement to Mr. Fiecher, who, um, we had a public meeting, and we had some discussion back and forth, but what we have for you tonight is, um, as the city attorney mentioned, a highlighted copy, and what I, what I thought we would do is kind of, the things I highlighted are plug and play, like, you know, it's X years, Y years, whatever you guys want, I can tell you why we picked some numbers we picked, but these were designed and highlighted so you could say, oh, I don't like that number, or I don't like this term, a lot of this contract is kind of, you know, boilerplate, it's generic stuff that needs to be in the contract, but it's probably not all that exciting, um, I'm happy to address the thoughts on any part of it, but I wanted to take you through what I thought was the most salient parts, or parts that differ from previous employment agreements we've had with our city managers, on page one, section 1C, there's a clause that the city manager position is a full-time position, comes as no surprise to anyone who's attended these meetings, it's more than a full-time position, um, but there is a caveat that the city manager not engage in essentially moonlight in any other way without, that would conflict with or interfere with his discharge of his duties to the city, without prior written approval by city commission, I think that's, probably goes without saying, but we, we wanted to put that in there to make that clear, and partly because Mr. Fiecher does have a, it came up during the interview, um, he does have a, a, a business he's incorporated that does do some consulting and other things, and, you know, we thought that was a prudent thing to address, um, the way that I conceptualized this originally, and I talked with the city attorney about this, was I wanted this to be a, an agreement that had kind of a natural terminus, where we could say at the end of this thing, okay, mission accomplished, no one's terminating anyone, no one's severancing anyone, it's not a word I'm using, I'm creating it, no one's severancing anyone, it's just, we're done, we're going to go in a different direction, that direction could be a new contract with the same person, I was thinking of, you know, running for office or something like that, sometimes, you know, people just want to go a different direction, or they're done, it's not necessarily a, a rejection or a condemnation, it's just kind of mission accomplished, so I wanted the first term in my mind to last a little bit longer, because I think there's going to need to be some change, some shakeup, and I think Mr. Fiecher needs some, some time to kind of put things in motion, and a little bit of insulation from the kind of fallout from some of the initial changes, so what I thought was, five years, and then every three years after that, the contract would naturally come to an end, and we would have to make an affirmative vote to just continue the contract, um, and if we didn't, then that would be effectively saying, okay, we're done, we're going in a different direction, there would be no requirement for severance or anything like that, uh, the contract just kind of naturally end, we wouldn't renew it, and we would go a different direction, that's not to say that this creates any additional guarantee of employment for five years or anything like that, we expressly state this is employment at will, at, at any point, either side can walk away, subject to the rights and, uh, reservations we lay out in here, so that's kind of what I approached, how we approached. So that's kind of what I approached, how we approached this. If you guys don't like that, you know, that's something, of course, we can take up. But I just thought it was a good idea that we have kind of a natural endpoint, not this is a never, a continual contract that will go on and on unless there's, you know, some big event. The, um, then the, other than that, there are several ways the contract or the employment can be broken. Obviously, there's a termination at will, I mean, I'm sorry, termination for cause and without cause. And the contract talks about how that happens. On the next page, we did talk about, section three is important. The performance evaluations are part of our charter. We're supposed to have a performance evaluation yearly. We've kind of made this part of the contract, that that will be something that will be done annually. And it's contemplated that at that time, on the anniversaries, like the five-year and the three-year anniversaries, would be when we vote to either renew the contract or not. So in essence, every so often, there will be a review under criteria that will have to be kind of created later. We toyed around with attaching some criteria here, but it became cumbersome. So the idea would be, we would come up with separately the criteria for the manager's evaluation. That would be something that would happen on a regular basis. And then we would essentially then decide whether we can continue to have the contract or not on the appropriate anniversaries. The contract and the manager can be terminated, um, with a simple majority vote. If it's a termination without cause, then it's a 30-day notice and severance is set by statute. Uh, we reference the Florida statute here that governs that. It's less than the current manager severance terms because the statute has changed. And the vote, which we did not highlight, is a, it's a simple majority, which is a change from the current agreement. If there's a termination for cause, there is no, um, no obligation to pay severance as set out in this agreement here. Termination for cause means a material breach of this agreement, a conviction for a felony or a crime involving moral perpetuity. And that conviction is regardless of whether adjudication of guilt is formally withheld or not. Additionally, neglect of duties, including inability or unwillingness to perform the duties or conduct unbecoming or likely bring discredit. So we have pretty broad definitions for that. There's constructive termination and termination due to disability, that's something that we added in here. If the employee becomes permanently disabled, um, and has used their leave, then we have the option of terminating them with written notice. We thought that was kind of a humanitarian, um, way of handling it. And then, of course, the, the manager could always resign. He's asked to give 90 days' notice. The section five is the base salary, that number is highlighted. $220,000 was the number that we placed in there. And then the B is that the salary increases in accord with the other employees' overall increases. As was alluded to earlier, there was some, um, discussion about why the $220,000 figure was selected. A couple of things went into that. First, as some of the commentators pointed out, there are other employees who make over $200,000. And the idea was that it was, didn't seem appropriate to have a subordinate making more than the, essentially the highest authority city employee. So when we have employees who are making over $200,000, $205,000, $210,000, I think the literature, I think some of the supporting literature has some of the pertinent salaries. This seemed a reasonable base salary that was higher than the other employees, not, not tremendously more so. And kept kind of the salaries in line with the chain of command. But it's also not a number that's completely without basis in kind of broad strokes throughout Florida. I looked at some surveys and we got some data that should be in the supporting documentation, if it's not in your email, um, for what manager salaries are in other cities. You know, we have to kind of figure out what is Daytona's actual size? You know, is it 60,000, 80,000, is it 125,000? Or is it, you know, 500,000 at times? And I think that when you, I saw some data and other studies that said for a city of 60,000 to 80,000 people, the average manager salary was in the $180,000, $200,000 range. And I, I think I sent that material in to be part of your supporting documentation. So you can look at some of the other cities and decide how this number fits in with them and whether you think that's a good match or not for Daytona Beach. But it didn't seem a number that was, you know, completely out of, uh, step with other cities that have similar sizes and similar swelling populations due to special events. Liability assurance is pretty straightforward. One caveat that we did put in there is that although the city manager can select his own attorney, we have kind of oversight on whether the fee is reasonable and won't pay a fee that's excessive. Life insurance and disability is a general standard, we'll provide that. Health insurance for the employee and his eligible dependents. An automobile allowance, and again, all these numbers have been highlighted so you can plug and play which ones you want to change or leave as they are. We'll maintain anything that's related to professional development and professional obligations like the dues and subscriptions to pertinent, uh, literature or kind of continuing education, things like that. We'll cover as well as travel expenses that are necessary to pursue the job function. General expenses, again, that's pretty standard. You know, cell phone, a company card, things like that, reimbursement of expenses that are related to city business. Personal leave, this is again, I think, relatively standard. But the, we did put in that the employee shall be entitled to payment for accrued leave upon separation from employment to the same extent as provided to other employees under the personal leave program. The employee will participate in FRS. And we will pay in the maximum deferred, maximum comp amount allowed by law. We didn't define that because it changes based on your age. Under a certain age, I think it's $19,500 currently. Above a certain age, it's, I think, $26,500. But the IRS periodically changes that. And if you get above a certain age, the amount goes up, it's kind of a catch-up provision. As you near retirement, you can say, put a little bit more money away. So we just defined this in reference to the, I think it's federal law. So we didn't put in a specific number. Residence, that was something that was very important to everyone, was it the, and Mr. Fiecher agreed wholeheartedly to relocate and reside within the city limits. 90 days to do that. We gave a one-time housing allowance and a one-time relocation expense. This is a number that was used in other, with other city commissioners, I'm sorry, other city managers. We just adjusted the allowance for relocating and the housing allowance, the same net amount. We just adjusted between the two based on feedback from Mr. Fiecher about what he kind of needed more. And I think the rest of that is, is pretty standard stuff. Originally, we had intended to attach, um, the copy that I have has the evaluation of the city manager, uh, form attached, but I think that we got away from doing that. So if your copy has that, you could disregard that because that's not going to be a material part of the contract. And I believe I've covered that.
The evaluation will not be a material part.
The, the form.
Form.
Yeah. It, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know, okay.
And then we put in, because we didn't, there's some language that was kind of red line change from the last version that you all had received. And that was just under section two. Originally, uh, the attorney and I were talking about how we kind of dealt with this contract coming to a natural ending date. There was some concern that if we didn't have it renew automatically, it could slip through the cracks. So I kind of, I, I said, no, I don't think we'll miss, we'll miss this, this is a pretty important thing. I don't think the city manager is going to miss renewing his contract. So, uh, we just changed this to be more consistent with what I thought people wanted, which was a natural ending that we could renew as opposed to an automatically renewing contract. But if you don't like that, of course, we can go back and do it however the majority of commission wants to do. And so that's the, that's why these changes were made and highlighted in section two. And then section three speaks to what I talked about earlier, which was originally, we were going to have written evaluation criteria that would be part of the contract. But I was concerned, I think the attorney was concerned as well, that that might create some, like, right to those terms. And we also didn't think that the form was robust enough. And we didn't think it was a good enough criteria to attach and make something that we were contractually obligated to live up to. So what we've agreed in this version is just that we will come up with written standards for the evaluation that will be incorporated later. But this way, this gives us more flexibility as a commission to change those over time. If we like them, we don't like them, want to change the weighting of them, however we want, without it being something that he could say, no, legally, this is what we agreed to, this is what I'm kind of demanding. And it's my understanding, um, from speaking to Mr. Jagger, that he went over all these changes with Mr. Fiecher and he was in agreement with all the changes?
Of course, we have Mr. Fiecher, uh, on Zoom with us.
That's right.
So I'll let him speak for himself there.
But I think that covers, uh, the work that we did in broad strokes. Bob worked tirelessly to get this done, and he was making changes up to like, you know, almost 6 o'clock tonight. So, um, I want to thank him, he was really helpful in getting this done. And he, other than just drafting the contract, he gathered a lot of information and data from other cities and, um, other contracts that other managers used and things like that. So this is compiled from contracts for positions across the state. If there are any questions, I can try to answer them.
And truthfully, Mr. Sexton was compiling most of the data that was given to you.
Everyone's patting everyone.
Okay, well, uh, first of all, I want to say I'm, I'm glad that you enjoy working with Bob on this as much as I enjoy working with him all the time. I don't know where he gets his resources, but it's always very helpful. Mr. Fiecher, welcome. And, uh, you know, we're excited and delighted, uh, to be at this point. And so we, uh, want to hear from you and see if you had any, uh, observations that you wanted to make regarding, uh, this process and where we are right now.
Honorable Mayor Commissioners, um, thank you for the opportunity. I'll just say that working with, uh, Mr. Jagger and Commissioner Delgado was a pleasant experience. Um, I think that the agreement that we were able to work, work through is something that I, I know I can live with, that's why it was not a very hard thing. I will say that the work that Mr. Jagger did of making sure that I was aware of any, um, changes or concerns, uh, it, it went very easy. And I look forward to the opportunity to come and working with you all on June 1st.
Okay.
Now, I stand for any questions, if there are any questions.
Well, I, I do want to address, um, the, and this was, and I spoke with Mr. Jagger. The evaluation tool that we have had in place has been something that I have long wanted to change. Because I don't think it really adequately allows us to tune into our, the evaluation, have the evaluation more tied to our strategic plan, which, you know, I know you're adept at that area of, uh, management. So I haven't quite decided how I'm going to come before them and then you, but we'll have a discussion as to a new form and create something that, that we will all be able to agree to. And that way, we'll have something that I think really reflects the quality of work that we hope and expect to get from you.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that it affords me the opportunity to know your expectations from a strategic planning process and make sure that me and members of the team were able to accomplish the goals that you all have for us. And especially for me as the chief administrative officer.
Okay, awesome. Do we have any additional questions or comments?
I do.
Yes.
Um, the valuation, I think it's a great idea. Um, Delgado, I think, and Mr. Jagger did a great job on the contract. The only problem I have is with the salary. I mean, doing all my work, this, maybe no one else does, but I do have a problem. I've looked at everybody's pay around here and I know a lot of people have been here a long time. And I understand how Delgado feels that he should be higher than, but what I'm saying, Mr. Jack, Mr. Jagger, I think, has been here 12 years. I mean, so I just think that he should be able to work up, um, to the 220, um, maybe 200, um, to 10. His original, um, resume actually said, I believe it was, um, 185 to 215 he was asking for. And then we bumped it to 220.
Let me ask this question. Who, who, uh, because I don't know those numbers of the other people other than Bob. Who's the highest paid person? Is it, does anyone make more money than Bob?
Probably Mr. Sexton would be best to speak to the salaries, it wasn't your backup information.
Okay, yeah, and I didn't, I didn't see that.
You should have a copy.
Yeah. I just want to know, who, who makes more than Bob?
Nobody. Jim Sexton, for the record, um, city manager, city attorney, deputy city manager, administrative services, those are the only three in the 200 ranges.
Okay. But, and in my opinion, it, Bob would be the only, would be the person that could make more money than the city manager.
And he will, under this agreement, he will.
Okay, so he already does?
Yes.
All right, well, I'm, that's, that's pretty much where I think the city manager should be and it's the only other person that should, from my perspective. I don't know what the salary is, I'm, I'm okay with the 220. Uh, but does anyone else, um, have another issue? No? Okay, all right, that's, that's good enough for me. Did you, uh, I'll let you carry on.
That's all, I just wanted to state my opinion.
Okay, all right. Um, do we, is there, there's no other questions on Mr. Fiecher? Ms. May?
According to the contract, it says that by commission vote, if I'm understanding it correctly, with, it deals with Mr. Fiecher's second business, I believe. And so my thought is, a second business, another job in addition to being a full-time city manager, where we recognize Mr. Fiecher is a pretty hands-on kind of guy. He likes to be involved with the community, the people, the business, the whole nine. So that being the case, where's the room for that? But is that something we should vote on since it's in the contract?
It's in the contract.
Mr. Delgado, Commissioner Delgado?
Well, I think it would be, the way that this is written is if, if there's a conflict or interferes with his duties, then he, then he would require our vote. I thought from the questions that were asked of him last time, that didn't seem like that was an issue. I think he had a corporation, didn't seem like he was actively doing anything with it. So, I mean, I think that would be up to him to, if he reactivates it or is contemplating moonlighting and he thinks it could interfere, he would, or he would bring it to our attention. But I wasn't aware of anything, I mean, I think the contract speaks to itself. I mean, maybe a question for him, whether he has anything that he thinks might even be a close call. But I, I don't, I don't want to answer your question with a question, but that's about the best I could do, Commissioner May.
So are you contemplating that, sir? Reactivating a business and performing in a secondary business in addition to being city manager?
No, I will not be active, um, as a consultant. If I did decide that, I would have to get approval as Commissioner Delgado. But at this time, I do not plan on running a consultant business over this five-year contract.
Thank you so much.
But I, I want to make it clear that if you are given an opportunity to, um, do something that could be beneficial to you and your family, that doesn't take away from your day-to-day job and this doesn't become something that's consistent and become problematic. I think that the contract reads that you can come to us and say, you know, I have this and this is, is it agreeable to you all? Because I am not averse to, you know, that sort of interest as long as it's a minor and greatly subordinate, uh, role to what you are bringing to us. Is that agreeable to, to everyone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, because when you think about all the things that we do, I mean, we're more than just city commissioners, we're owning businesses, we're going to work every day. I mean, we do multiple things. So if it were something that was controllable, once or twice, it might even be mentoring other city managers, it might be teaching a class on politics at one of the local universities. I mean, as long as it doesn't take away from what he's supposed to do from us, for us, I don't have a problem with him occasionally doing something else.
And Commissioner Reed, that's exactly what we were thinking about.
That's, that's what I thought.
Is, you know, if he, if he gets an opportunity to teach something or a presentation and not writing something or, you know, we wanted him to have that opportunity to develop himself. Because it's good for us, too. I think the mayor city manager is out there in the public doing those things, it nourished our benefit. But we just wanted to have some control over it. And I, I put it in there because there was some concern voiced by everyone when he was here about him having that corporation and all of that. So we wanted to make sure that everyone felt comfortable that, you know, we had his, uh, his first priority was here at the city. So that's why that was put in there.
I could even see him speaking at conferences, putting Daytona's name out there.
Sure.
Because of the great things we're doing, the great things we shall do. And there might be a stipend that comes with that.
Yeah, I don't know if that's customary or not.
Conferences are like, once a year.
Yeah. Honorable Mayor Commissioners, that is one of the things that I did. I am, I'm, I am one of the coaches for the ICMA E-Match Program for, um, young city managers, as well as providing, um, trainings through the community redevelopment conferences that take place to the Florida City County Manager Association and Florida Legal City. So those were the type of roles, as well as doing strategic planning for the local Chamber of Commerce and the, um, local colleges with their, um, different teams and groups at the, um, at the different colleges. So that's the type of consulting work that I was doing. And it was primarily, um, during a conference or on a Saturday for the Chamber of Commerce or Polk State College.
Well, it's aligned with his job.
Yeah.
It just puts us out there.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Do we have a public comment?
We had the one public comment.
We had no one?
We had.
Oh, we heard from John.
There's been a motion and a second.
There's been a motion and a second.
From who was the motion?
Commissioner Reed and Commissioner Henry.
Commissioner Henry. All right. We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those in opposition, same sign.
Because I have a motion or, sorry, request, my vote is no.
Oh, okay. Motion carries six, one.
And I will assume, or maybe I shouldn't assume, but I want to point out that the motion was to include the red line changes, which were part of your packet. So I'll include the final draft.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
And he is aware of those red line changes, correct?
Yes, we've been, they've been provided.
Okay.
Okay. All right. We are excited. Go ahead, sir.
I truly appreciate the opportunity to serve. I will say that, I want to say that Attorney Jagger and Commissioner Delgado were exceptional to work with. I did reach out to Mr. Chisholm to, to they just have a conversation to, to talk about potential transition and the communication I received from the city manager has been great. I look forward to working with all of you all to keep the trajectory of Daytona Beach moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, sir. See you soon.
See you soon. Bye-bye.
Okay.
Okay.
We do have to learn how to pronounce the man's name if you want to be our city manager.
What is it?
All this feature stuff. The man's name is Fiecher.
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 Jim says Fiecher, you all say Fiecher.
Fiecher.
It's Fiecher.
Okay. I've got Fiecher.
We want to be in a town, Fiecher.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Calling me Red.
Yes, ma'am.
We're going to move on to item number 11, which was the discussion item. It's the city commission discussion on city auditor appointment. And I believe the mayor had asked for this.
Oh, okay.
On the agenda.
Yes, I did. And I hope you all had an opportunity to review the documents that Bob sent. This is a, he sent those a while ago.
Yeah.
But this is a role that would enable this person to essentially, the job, in my opinion, is to help ensure that each department is operating on all cylinders. It should not be viewed as an adversarial. We want our city and we want every department to operate at the highest practice, in the highest possible way. And I know some people are looking at, you know, it's even things that, that if we wanted to do, you know, some people complain about how much certain people are paid. We want this person to be able to essentially go in at either our request, could be the request of a department. Department might want them to come in and look at their financial protocols, procedures, the way that things are working. So this person would work for us, just as these two do. And so that's really why I brought it before you. And I wanted to know how you all felt, to see if this was something you wanted to take a journey on.
I like it. I think the more fiscally sound we are and more responsible we are with the citizens' money, the better. Sometimes you just have to take a good, hard look at yourself, you know, and see what you're doing right, what can you do better? What are you doing wrong? How can we improve? And I don't see anything wrong with that. And I think we need this.
Actually, I do, too.
I do, too. I think it speaks to the transparency that we all aspire to.
Mm-hmm.
I'm for it.
Okay. And I do want to point out that this is, you know, I've, they've had conferences, sessions on it at various mayoral conferences that I've been to, and it is considered a best practice for municipalities. Now, honestly, it's not a manager's dream. It's usually not something that they prefer. But.
Actually, it's good for the manager.
Yeah. He says, actually, it's good for the manager.
It is.
Okay. Well, I agree that it is, but I don't.
Some leaks. Some leaks.
Yes. So, does anyone else have an opinion on this or a thought? I mean.
I'm good with it.
Okay. All right. So what that means is, do we need to, we'll ask staff to come back? Typically, this, we have to do a search in the same way that we've done here.
Budget development, create the position and those kind of things. We can bring an item back. It'll help us carry to the next step.
Okay. That'll, that's it.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Okay. So we'll see it when it gets back before us. And that concludes our commission meeting. So we'll move to comments from the commission. Commissioner Cantu?
Okay. I'll try to keep it short. I have a lot. First of all, I want to tell Deputy Jim Morris and Glenn, license and permit, I got your name right? Oh, he's not here. See, I was thinking he was. See, I never get anybody's name right. And who was the other one?
Ron.
Oh, you, okay. I want to say thank you. You guys did an excellent presentation at Margaritaville. I had a lot of good feedback. Did you share one of the feedbacks that I sent you by email? Okay. And, and actually, we had a really big crowd, too. The next thing I had, I wanted to thank Family Health Source. I'm on the board of that and the staff did an amazing job.
Amazing.
Yes. And actually, we did 177 Moderna vaccines. And we have a few more things. You want to come up and tell them what's going on?
Well, while he's coming, I want to say I was going to personally thank you for your work with them and for all that they've done on behalf of the city. Simply amazing. I'm so excited and appreciative.
Thank you.
It's serious. Yes. Thank you.
Drew Dreschko, Deputy City Manager, IRG. Yes. Thanks to Commissioner Cantu. We're able to connect with Family Health Source and utilize the former DMV building that's currently vacant to host a one-day event. And this event was targeted to make a low-barrier event for the underserved, underinsured community. We wanted to specifically target that population. And with the assistance of the Communications Division and also the Police Department, the Police Department went door-to-door trying to promote within the community. We feared that if we went social media immediately, we would bring in a lot of outside individuals and not serve the community that we want to serve. But this is only the first of many vaccine events. As you know, we've been at the Midtown Cultural and Educational Center with the Department of Health. But Family Health Source is already doing an event tomorrow, right in the church in our shared parking lot from 1:00 to 4:00. And they're also working with us right now, beginning conversations to look at hosting an event either in the evening hours or on a weekend to really reach out to those worker folks that would like to get the vaccine but are unable to leave work. So I think we've made great strides in the city of Daytona Beach with hosting several vaccine initiatives. In the future, I will reach out in advance or through my boss, I'll reach out in advance because I know, Commissioner Reed, I apologize, I did not let you know that the vaccine site was in your district, but I will do that in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I want to say, I'm glad you're doing that because one of the first messages I got based on the time, of course, when I send it out, folks, this doesn't help working people. And, you know, I understood that. But it's good that we, we have to vacillate the time so that we can, because we are that demographic where we want to be able to get, you know, everyone an opportunity.
And if I could, I believe we reached, reached that point in the COVID vaccine where we're starting to see an abundance of vaccine supply compared to a lack of people wanting to get that vaccine. It happened overnight, it feels like. So the Communications Division, in addition to Betty Goodman, are currently working on the marketing to create confidence within the community and give understanding of the importance of this vaccine.
Yeah. Now is the time, you know, I don't know if you all know, I think I mentioned this before, but I was able to get donations of $25,000 to help with our marketing. And now is the time that I think we have to do that, to try to market, to say to our community, we want everyone to get vaccinated. Come on out. This is where you get vaccinated. This is how. We have to get the message out. And, and so I knew this day was going to come. And it's, it's here a little faster than I thought. I thought initially, May, June, but it really is here. Yes, ma'am?
I'm curious, when did this actually start to decrease? Was there a downward trend? Did something happen to signal it?
No, actually, we, I don't think, at least myself, I did not pick up on the signal of the change. It seemed as if about a week and a half to two weeks ago, the Department of Health started to see a decline in the number of people showing up for the appointments out of the Midtown Center. And as if today, they had a decline. They had 600 vaccines to give out. And I don't know their exact number, but as of lunchtime, it was around 100 that they had administered.
So the only numbers we have right now are from Volusia County and the people who have taken it through Volusia County. Do we have an aggregate number of people? Because there are lots of different operations of vaccine. There's the hospital. Is that, are you looking at all of those numbers also?
Yes, ma'am. So anyone who is providing a COVID vaccine, whether your doctor's office or a pharmacy or the Department of Health, they all must report through Florida Shots. And that information, which is in your city manager's newsletter, that is up to date and accurate.
I have a question. Did we provide, or are we providing shots for our, our citizens that are living in the homeless shelter?
That's, that's something that's working on right now. They're, they're going to be doing that, too.
That is actually already scheduled. First Step Shelter, they'll be receiving the, they wanted to specifically target the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine because of the difficulty of trying to keep up with them. The partnership with Florida Family Health Source has actually been tremendous and they were excited. Similar to the excitement the Department of Health has had that the city has stepped up aggressively, whatever they need. I know Vincent Terry isn't here this evening. Anytime we need anything from Leach or Cultural Services, they jump at the spot. PD always has people there. I have EMS there. It's been a great team effort.
Drew, can I interrupt you on the, on the First Step Shelter? It was scheduled for tomorrow morning at 9:30, but Victoria said some of the people in the shelter go to work. So Family Health Source is trying to work something out where they can come in the evening when they come home from work. Otherwise, some of them will miss the vaccines.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. It's awesome. Okay. Thank you, Drew. And thanks for everything. You're doing a great job overall in that, that area.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And so Monday, we should know exact date when they will be setting up another, for the evening. And Drew will know that. Tomorrow is Johnson &amp; Johnson next door, 1:00 to 4:00. They have over 300, but they can always go get more.
Mm-hmm.
If needed. The next thing, my bus benches. I want, I need bus benches on Clyde Morris from the new sidewalk. We have two, and I need one on each side. And then I noticed from Bevel to Bellevue, I believe there's like six bus stops. And there's always people standing out there. And I would like to see if we can get a bus bench out there as well.
And Malia, we need a sidewalk there, too, if we could. Because people are standing in the grass and the weeds at bus stops, waiting for the bus. Yes, I see that. From those apartments across the street, they're coming over. This is on the east side of the street. We have a sidewalk on the west side.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay. And, that's it, I had, oh, and I'm bringing this up again. I would like to have a discussion and see about getting the public back in. I mean, every other seat, every two seats, I don't mind mask mandate. I mean, but I feel like it's time. It's been over a year.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Henry?
Just a few quick things. That is, I'm not sure if you remember, but we have a very nice facility over at YSG that probably could use, we use as a site for administering the vaccine. There are many underserved people in that community who don't have transportation access to the outside.
I don't think they're picking you up on the mic.
It's not on.
Okay. Let me start over.
Sorry.
I just want to remind staff that there is a nice community center, the YSG, Yvonne Scarlett Golden Center, that could be used as a site for vaccination. I know there's been a couple over in the same area, and I'd kind of like to see maybe if we could get one over that way because that, too, is a community with lots of underserved people that could use a, could use access to the vaccine as well. So perhaps that's something that we can look at in the next couple of weeks and move forward. I would like to see that. The other thing is that, that the Norma Bland naming is going to be on June 12th, and I would love to see everyone to come out and check out the new field. It is a beautiful field. And it is very befitting of Norma. And we're going to have a ceremony at 4:30 on Saturday, June 12th, and I want to invite the public out to come out and come to the little ceremony that we're going to have. City manager and I had the opportunity to tour the zone last week, came up with quite a few projects that we're going to be working on, some different cleanups and some different, just some things that need to happen in the zone. So be looking forward to more news on that. And excited to see that we're moving forward, we're trying to get parks and recreations back open. I, the children are everywhere and they need a nice place to go and, and exercise and run and jump. And I think we all could, could agree that COVID has caused us to kind of put on maybe the COVID-5 or the COVID-10 or the COVID-20. That does not, not include our children. It does include our children. And they are not getting the exercise that they need. And I think with parks and recreation opening up, it's going to be a great opportunity for them to, for us not to just take care of them mentally, but to help take care of them physically. And that's all I have tonight.
Can I say one more thing? Because we're having the 76th Annual Convention for the First Time for the Military of the Purple Heart Convention. Very excited and it means a lot. And I know some of you have R.S.P.E.D. My father was a Vietnam vet and was a Purple Heart, which Easter is Sunday, was the anniversary. So, and I'm, thank you for sponsoring this event as well, the city did.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Reed?
All right, Mr. Chisholm, get your pen ready. I just want to bring to your attention, you know, the sidewalk that we put on North Street from Nova to Clyde Morris, we really need to look at the street. I go, I go in that area at least three or four times a week. My aunt lives on Michael. So when you turn on north off of Nova and you're passing Mark, it's something, it's just deplorable. There's a pothole, we've, a couple of potholes that we have continued to just put something in, but it's not staying there.
Is it on the, on Nova right of way?
No, it's, you're going to make a, you're going to go, which way is that? West or north off of Nova? Okay? So let's look at that street. If we could, even if we only could do like a quarter of it and pave those parts that are just bumpy and lumpy, that would be great. And speaking of streets, Weston had surgery yesterday, and the vet came out and asked, can we put a speed bump on? Is it Mason Court? That little J that comes behind Driftwood, behind KFC? He was saying how they just speed. They use that as a means to get around and not go to the light. And they're speeding around that corner. That's Mason Court. Okay? I'd just like to thank, I don't know David's last name, but David and Mr. Brooks. I am officially on the Commissioner's side of the hall now. So they helped move me on Friday. And I just want to thank those two. They stayed, not only did they move me, but they also helped me put things together. As we are looking at our parks and recs opening, I'm hoping that maybe by June or July, we could consider Midtown Motown. I've actually been given the name. They sent it to me, and they sent it to, I believe they sent it to Vincent Terry of a one-stop shop of a group that has everything from jazz to hip-hop to bebop to some names that they said. It came from Donna from Fresh Book Festival. She said the person would be reasonable. I think we're beyond now the, what do you ever call those bands when they mimic other people, just to give the citizen something else? So as we consider looking as if we're opening up towards the summer, we need to start thinking about it now, if we're gonna do it. I mean, if we don't do it, then it's just no void. But we need to at least plan, and then we can drop it if we're not gonna do it. Then, I wanted to just put some food for thought out there for you. I see in our manager's update that we are doing some repairs to the visitor's side of the stadium. And I just wanted to, I wanted to ask, I think I asked this before, but about repairing our Jumbotron. You know, a lot of the games, or most of the home games, I believe this year for Bethel and Cookland are on ESPN. And that really puts our city around the world, that people see, you know, Daytona Beach playing these games on via ESPN. Just gives thousands of followers to us. And then, I wanted to also think, you know, if we would even consider maybe even selling the structure? And/or maybe consider the DM, what's it, DMV?
DME?
DME contract that we have with them. We might want to look at maybe partnering with Bethel and Cookland on that. They play more games than anybody. They have the student body to have concerts. Everything that Dean proposed to us, that DME was gonna do, I can see them doing that. And our stadium getting more utilization throughout the course of a year than just when our high schools and when this college plays there. So just something to think about, food for thought. That concludes my comments.
Okay.
I wanted, excuse me, I wanted to ask about the inoculation event. It's gonna be tomorrow?
Yes.
At what time?
Between 1 and 4, and it's the Johnson &amp; Johnson. We share the parking lot with the church.
Right. Now, is there appointments? Do you have to be here?
No appointments needed.
No appointments, okay.
Right on your...
Yeah, I saw that. I just want to make sure that there were no appointments, or just to verify.
No appointments.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And, goodnight, everybody.
All right.
Keep safe.
Just, I'm glad that the contract was well received. Thank you for trusting me with that task. It was a privilege to do that for you guys. And again, I want to thank all the staff that helped us do that. That was definitely a group effort. A lot of people put their time into it. So I'm really excited that we've got a new, some new opportunities coming our way. I think it's gonna be a very, very exciting time for everyone. But other than that, just a goodnight thing.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
A few weeks ago, I think the mayor had a meeting with the beachside people, and I was wondering if we, we weren't allowed to attend. So do you have any updates for what the beachside community was saying with regard to some planning? Did you put a beachside group together? Were there any updates? Yeah. Were there any comments or anything that you can share with us, any insights?
Yeah, I will.
Oh, okay, no worries, okay. That's the first thing. All right, I'll just move from that then. Next thing is Captain Lee. I have a question for you, sir. I noticed a very nice, and Captain Lee and I work closely together, and I appreciate all of his efforts. I think of it as community management before things become a problem, right? So we have a nice new mobile app, the Daytona Beach Police Department, and it has really nice features on, including file a report. So my question is, sir, when people are filing a report, first of all, are people using this feature, and do they know about it yet?
Are they using what, I'm sorry?
The feature, right over here, with the file a report, with regard to code?
Well, as far as it relates to code, with the report that they can file online, well, first, I'm sorry, Scott Lee, police captain, Daytona Beach. The app is where they can go on and they can do the online reporting for the police department. There's certain, there's certain lower-level stuff that can be reported through the police department online, and that's what that's for. Our reporting for the code portal is not linked to that app yet, and it can be accessed through the website.
Okay, so with regard to codes, since I have you here, could you talk to us a little bit about code on beachside? I continue to get pictures of overflowing trash cans, and I was kind of hoping we could have some extra pickups. I thought we had arranged extra pickups during the holidays, during summer months, number one. And I thought maybe we could do just some extra work on that side. Between Friday, Saturday, Sunday, given that we have an overwhelming amount of people, when it picks up like this, if we could have more garbage pickups, it would be great. And I'm happy to send you the pictures, so you can see the locations. They're always the same locations on Ocean Ave, always the same.
Yeah, if you're talking about trash on parcels or on properties, we can certainly address those and go after those property owners to make sure that they're being accountable for their properties. We work hand-in-hand with Public Works and David Waller and some of his staff that increase those pickups or respond to those pickups as we identify them. If you or a citizen sends me that information, I'm glad to always communicate with them, and they're usually very quick to respond to those.
I seem to have a couple of key areas, which I'm gonna address right now. Pleasant, Pleasant Street in Midtown. I have a lady, I have this woman who calls me regularly every single week. It's to the point where I'm a little bit embarrassed when I call her up saying, well, I'm not sure what I can do about it at this point. But there are things going on around it. I've given you her number, but I'll give it to you again. It's embarrassing sometimes because it's happening so often in the area, including the trucks that park there overnight. In fact, I spoke with TPO about it, and they're trying to create some new areas that are not within city limits, but on the outskirts, but where trucks can actually park, tractor-trailers, because they're realizing there aren't any places for them to park safely, where they have conveniences. So they recognize people are coming into the inner cities to park, and they're trying to do something about it. But it was a big topic of conversation at the last meeting. So the areas that I'm finding, I'm getting issues with. Beachside, some of the hotels on beachside, some of the fencing on beachside with regard to hotels. Arlington, Mulberry, the church. And it seems as though oftentimes that there is waste left there for prolonged periods of time. I will say thank you, though, to Public Works and Code because an issue did come up, and I think the resident just didn't have all the information. But it seems that we were working an active code case in the Arlington-Mulberry area. So thank you very much for that.
That is correct. Those areas, I'll make sure that we follow up on. The Pleasant Street one, I know that we've had some cases before and some issues. We've discussed those before. I'll follow up on that. The hotels on the beachside, we have been working with some of them as they try to work through development projects. And there are some code cases on some of them. There's also some that have recently been, needed a little more follow-up on our end. We identified some of those last week and added them to the list that we'll be working. And as far as Arlington and Mulberry, I mean, we're aggressively working that area. And there's been many cases on Mulberry. And we'll continue to work that area and collaborate with Public Works on it. They've assisted even with some trash removal on parcels for us as a result of some of those areas.
All right, so thank you very much, and I appreciate always working well with you. Thank you for that.
No problem.
I also want to ask a question about Lenox. I had a, I had a resident contact me about speeding or just some traffic hazards on Lenox. And I was just wondering, on beachside, where we were with that? That we're gonna do a traffic study, I think? Are we still doing that?
I'm not aware of it, but we'll, I'll find out.
Oh, we are? We are, okay, good, super. Thank you so much. I just didn't want them to think that I was ignoring the situation. So I just want to move back to something. You know, I appreciate the fact that we like to use words like transparency. I appreciate the work of a good citizen, Ann Ruby, in requesting that I am transparent. And I want us to keep in mind that the person who initiated the records request was Ms. Ann Ruby, because she was looking to understand process and perhaps assuming that I was not following process, and I was. So consequently, I just want to be sure that I'm understanding something right now, because it was a little bit of a confusion for me. I made a motion, and what I asked for specifically, right, was I moved that all city commissioners, including the mayor, Derek Feach, Robert Esclavon, and Barbara Lipscomb, submit all text messages sent or received about the city manager selection, and that such submissions be made by close of business at City Hall on Friday, April 9. Was that, or was that not a motion?
You originally stated it as a motion, but then you changed, as I understood.
Did I have to amend it? Did I have to amend it at that point, or say I withdraw it? Did I have to withdraw the motion?
No, no, your motion was never seconded, so it was never on the floor.
So I want to be sure, nobody, so I made a motion, but nobody seconded the motion?
That's correct.
So then it died for lack of second?
And, yes, and at the same time, you withdrew the motion in effect by stating you meant that to be a public records request.
And that was after you were saying, could we do A, B, or C? So I just want to be sure that procedurally, because there was a little kerfuffle that happened there. Everybody was asking what kind of, how do we go about doing this, right? So it died for lack of second, and then it became a public records request. Is that correct?
That was my understanding of your request, yes.
Okay, then. You know, I really believe that on a commission, what's good for one is good for all. I don't like singling out people particularly. I don't think it's the way to go. I think that if Ms. Ruby had a concern, it was most likely not just about me. If she had an interest, I'm sure it was about, I don't know what it was about, quite, to be quite honest with you. But I do know that I complied, and I complied swiftly. And I've submitted everything into evidence. But again, the word transparency is used in commission often. And the word transparency is used by residents often. And I welcome the transparency question. And that is my comments on it. So thank you so much for indulging me in all of that. Thank you.
Okay, I'm a little confused. I just want to clear this up, because you said there wasn't a motion. But now we're saying there was a motion.
Which, for me, Mr. Jagger?
Right.
I'm sorry, are you asking me?
Yes.
She made a motion, clearly. She made a motion, it was not seconded.
I know, but you...
I asked for a clarification as to whether she meant that to be a motion or whether it was intended to be a request for public record.
And if you listen to the record or play it back, you'll notice I said, yes, it's a motion. And then we continued back and forth.
So here's the bottom line. The bottom line is, were you, because we went down a rabbit hole that you're making it seem, or it seems as though you didn't intend us to go down. You, I'm understanding you to say that you were making a motion.
Yes.
You were not making a public records request.
It was after we were going back and forth, and Mr. Jagger made it appear as though I could not make a motion. We did not ask to withdraw the motion.
Tell us, if you want to make a public records request, you're entitled to do that.
I wanted to make a motion. And you said I could not make a motion, correct?
No, no, okay. Here, I want to start.
So, one second.
Hold it, hold it. It sounds as though, because we want to do what you are requesting. All of that public records request is something that we interpreted that she intended. So we went down that road, and we, you all have formally accepted a public records request. It sounds as though she wanted to make a motion. So the public records request is null. And now, you simply want to make a motion to see if it can be seconded?
Yes, because that was my original intent when I started. I wanted to make a motion, because I wanted to be on the record that this is what I'm doing, and this is what I did. That's why I read everything in there. But, yes, that's it exactly. And so what do we do with this? And that was why I asked for clarification earlier on, because I kept playing it over. So where are we right now with it?
I understand your clarification, but we've all decided, I have no problem giving my...
Well...
I mean, and it's on record, I mean...
That's not the point. The point is that she, let her say what she's saying so that we can either do it or not do it.
Sure, what I said was originally, and the very first time, was I read the statement very clearly. The statement read, I'll say it one more time. "I move that all city commissioners, the mayor, Derek Feach, Robert Esclavon, and Barbara Lipscomb submit all text messages sent or received about the city manager selection, and that such submissions be made by close of business at City Hall on Friday, April 9, as a motion." And I started it that way. I move that.
All right, does the motion have a second?
I'll second, I don't, I have nothing to hide.
Okay, you have a second. Now we have to take public comment.
Does any member of the public want to speak on this item?
Charles W. Cherry, the second, 732 C-Duck Drive, Daytona Beach, Florida. Commissioners, I mean, the request is reasonable. I agree with the fact that everything should be transparent. If what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I don't understand why there would be any hesitancy as to why anybody would not want to respond to a public records request. So from my perspective as a citizen, I think that if she has been requested, there's no reason for anybody else not to be held to the same standard. Thank you very much.
Let's make sure that we're held to the same standard simply by her asking for a public records request.
Exactly.
But she's asking for a motion. She wants it to be in the form of a motion. I'm not, you know, so, go ahead, sir.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. She indeed, I listened to the whole thing on my hard-steel chair out there while you had nice comfy seats in here. And she clearly did state it as a motion. It clearly was not seconded. I did not hear any second, until just recently, when it was reclarified. I do think a lot of it was lost in the shuffle. But to echo what the previous gentleman just said, my concern is, things do need to be made transparent here. The lack of trust of our city commission is going to get much worse if we continue to put things under the carpet. I will discuss that further in my public remarks, but I will say this much. The horse has been very much whipped, it's dead. But, maybe it'll be brought up in the future. But I do support free and open, under the sunshine laws of the state of Florida. And I do think her request was reasonable. Thank you.
John Nicholson, 413 North Ramford Avenue. Quanita, you are getting what you requested. Letitia has it, you will get it. Secondly, the motion that you made should have been seconded. The mayor did not request, does anybody want to second it? He did it later, but he didn't do it at the time. And Bob did what he was supposed to do. He gave you his information. But this is the second time that you've made a motion that just kind of hangs out there, all right? So to me, when a commissioner asks for it, regardless of the confusion that we had the last time, and the confusion that we're having this time, if someone makes a motion, mayor, please realize when they say, I want to make a motion, that you asked for the request for a second right away, so that we don't go through all of this again a second time. Thank you.
First of all, a second doesn't have to be requested. People second because they agree with what's been moved.
I agree.
37 Park Avenue. You know, I am a relentlessly curious person. I heard Commissioner May say at the meeting that she had received contact about preferences. And I thought, I'm curious, let's see what she got. That was it. Nothing concerned about procedure, no witch hunt, nothing. You mentioned that, I was curious. And since you are asking, the appropriate way to submit text messages is screenshots, I would ask that you do that as well. Thank you.
And I'm glad she said something, because Ann Ruby speaks. She doesn't bite her tongue. If she had wanted all of our information, Ann Ruby would have asked for all of our information. So I'm glad she's saying it wasn't a witch hunt, that it wasn't anything personal. She was just being nosy.
Next speaker.
Anybody else want to speak on this item? Okay, we're closing the public comment.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second on the floor. Do we have comments?
How do you receive text messages? I don't know how to text.
That's what we call a mic drop.
So I'm telling you.
May, as far as I'm concerned...
I know it's not funny, but when I first got into the commission, the city attorney at that time, she asked me, do you know how to text? I says, no. She says, don't learn. And I haven't.
Good for you, Ruby.
Good for you.
I don't mind handing over any of it, or my emails.
My thing is just, what next? Every time one of us gets a public record request, are we then going to go back and ask everybody for a public, do a public record request on each other, all for the next couple years? I'm just going to tell you, I think this is silly. And that's just my personal opinion, because I'm thinking, what next? We had already said we were willing to give you whatever you wanted. Everybody up here said they didn't have any text messages regarding the city manager search.
Emails.
Oh, I mean, it was text messages. I know I didn't get one text message regarding-
Oh, I didn't say that, no. That's why, yeah.
Oh, well, I didn't get any text messages. I understood it to be text messages. I didn't get any text-
I think it was about Feecher. Did you communicate with him? I think, were there any text messages with him?
That's what I was trying to ask. I just didn't want him entangled in this.
Not text messages. I didn't get anything.
That's what the mayor had been talking about when he said that.
You mean, from him?
Yeah, I didn't want him entangled in this discussion if he could not have to be. You're getting a new manager, and I didn't, I didn't get any text messages. That's what I was asking when I said, "From him specifically."
It wasn't just asked from other people as well, right?
Yeah. Yeah, she's asking any messaging from anyone about the city manager-
It's the same, it's the exact same wording that was given to me, to all of us, but it's the exact same request that was made of me, and I complied.
Okay.
We appreciate you complying. I just think it's silly.
Yeah.
I really do. I'm just going to be honest with you. It is just silly, especially since everybody had already said they were willing to give you whatever it was you were willing. And as your colleagues, if your colleagues said, "We're willing to give you whatever we have," I mean-
I think that explanation just told it all. Why did she even want it? You know, I didn't know if she was holding you to a different standard because you were the only "no." Oh, sorry. I didn't know if she was holding you to a different standard because you stood your ground on what you thought was, you know, your choice, or what she was doing. But her explanation just then, that summed it all up for me.
Sounds like she just wanted to know what the Cookman students were saying when they-
Or whomever to you.
Well, she said a lot of students.
My concern is, I don't, my concern is I don't want it to be that any of us were unwilling to comply. Me, the procedural thing, what I understood happened was, a motion was made, and then at some point it morphed into an oral public records request. And so, it was never, there was never a doubt in my mind or anyone's mind that we would comply with a public records request. So I don't want the people in the audience thinking that this becoming a formal vote is anything about obfuscating the public records request. It was just procedurally, the way I understood it is in line with what other people have said, which is that it became, that you wanted the public records request and made it as an oral statement, and then everything changed to being, how do we comply with that? So whether it's by motion or not, we've heard a public records request, we can't change away from that. Are you saying that if the vote is in a negative, you're not still making the public's records request? Because at this point, I've already heard a public records request has been made. So to me, this whole thing is meaningless. We're still doing the public records-
I'd like us first to work on the motion, because that was my original intent, was the motion first.
Are you withdrawing your public records request?
Yes, I am. I want to work on the motion. I specifically said something, and then there was a lot of confusion right there, and then it left. And then I tried to go back to it to understand what happened. So if we want to vote on that, that's fine. If there is no second, there is no second. If there is a second, and I think there was with a vote, then we take a vote.
Okay, can we just call the vote?
No, 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 we'll call the vote when I finish talking. We want to talk about this, and we want to look like, this is how we want to look. This is how we want to appear. We want to folly with one another over their text messages. Nope, nope. We want to folly with one another over their text messages, and we want to make them have to read through literally thousands of messages to identify what messages deal with Mr. Feecher. We all get public records requests. I get them all the time. And if I were to come here each time I get a public records request and ask everyone to do it, then I'm asking them to read through all of their messages. And it's a deep annoyance to me. It's not that I care about anyone knowing what was in the messages. I try to send the information forward to share with my colleagues when I think it's pertinent. So for me, it's a matter of the annoyance of having to read through literally thousands of messages when I could be reading on affordable housing, I could be reading on how to improve Seabreeze, I could be reading on how to improve Main Street. So it's an annoyance. It's not something that's going to change anything in the future or make our city better. If we're trying to move ahead, we have a manager. Let's move ahead. Why are we arguing over what was said in the past? I chose who I chose. You chose who you chose, you chose who you chose, you, 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 and you. We all chose. And now we have a manager. So why are we going back into the past? I don't, I'm annoyed by it, and I'm going to express it. So now, if no one else has anything else to say, now we can vote. Does anyone else have anything else to say? You have a motion, you have a second. Let's take a roll call vote, so everyone can stand where they stand. Commencing, what Commissioner can too.
Commissioner can too?
Yeah, I have nothing to hide.
Commissioner Henry? Commissioner Reed?
No.
Commissioner Trager?
No.
Commissioner Delgado?
No.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
No.
Okay, so it fails two to five.
Now, if you make a public records request, I'll be happy to comply, but I'm not going to vote on it because I don't think it's city business. It's not city business.
The public's record request would have gotten you exactly what you wanted anyway. It didn't have to be a motion. It's going to be a matter of record that it was asked for in this meeting.
And just to clarify that we still want to do the public record request?
I thought I heard you say it was withdrawn. Is that correct?
It was withdrawn, okay.
Who is, who is next? Well, I suppose, Commissioner May. You're done? Okay.
I'm done. It's your turn.
Okay, it is my turn. I wrote down some notes someplace, if I can find them, to discuss city business. I don't know where I put them, but I'm going to find them. My memory isn't what it used to be. I will just simply say that, number one, Seabreeze Boulevard, we've been, there's been talk about an arch, and I've discussed it with the manager, and they would like to have an arch designating something on Seabreeze. Originally, it was originally thought to be the Seabreeze Entertainment Zone, to which most of the residents did not like. And most, so that's really been axed. It's not even an issue that even the person who suggested it stands by because he knows that it's not supported. So during the first meeting that I had with folks on the beach side in this little group, that was one of the things I asked them, and they brought up a number of names that I will bring before you all after I go to the Seabreeze neighborhood community to get their input on what they think the name should be of an arch. Then the manager or staff will come up with a price or process of what the arch might cost, and before we can agree to do it or not do it, it would come before us as a commission as it relates to what the arch should say. If you notice on Main Street, there is an arch. If you notice on ISB, there is an arch, which used to be Broadway. And somehow, I think that we also need to talk about, you know, how we label our city, you know, how we want to be identified, you know? And so all of the arches, I wish that they had some semblance in looking similarly. The arch at ISB is, looks good. Yeah, it doesn't have, they don't have to say the same thing. This one may say, yeah, may say Seabreeze, or Seabreeze Historic District, or Seabreeze Historic Neighborhood, whatever the name we decide. But, yeah, we have to, and then I think ultimately, as we talk about branding our community, we should think about moving and extending this branding process. And you do it over time, sure, I agree. Maybe you have a neighborhood that says, an arch somewhere that says Midtown, so that you're entering into different communities that say something about where you are in our city. And that's a part of how we have to come up with this process of branding ourselves. This whole idea of talking about art districts in the city. Part of how we want to brand this, this part of the city is where you go for arts and entertainment or this sort of thing. So expect that at some point to come before us. Second thing I wanted to mention is that I gave to this group some homework, and I would give the same homework to this commission if you would be agreeable to take this as an assignment. Simple assignment. Main, Beach Street has changed a lot. Looks radically different than it did years ago, even two, a year ago, two years ago. Part of it, no one can deny that the project looks a lot better. Costs money, but it looks better. But also, you can't deny that the lighting down there has made it look better. The lighting, even on the trees. So what I'm asking is that we all, at night, take a stroll down Beach Street, look at how it looks, then cross the bridge on Main Street, and look at how it looks. And see how dim and dingy it looks. It's not bright enough. If, and we, you know, I'm on a mission to bring things before us that we can, some of it is not, even this is not, it's going to cost, but it's not going to blow us out of the water if we decide to do it. But I'm on a mission to improve our beachside. Tonight, we signed, we agreed to something that's going to bring us almost $100,000 in ad valorem taxes to us, okay? And it's going to enhance the neighborhood around it. Two months ago, we approved something that's a project that's on the Atlantic that will enhance the beachside. We have to remember that the beachside is a community that I believe is now, is ripe for taking off, okay? We're going to have a lot of other decisions to make as it relates to the Bike Week master plan. Things that we have to start thinking about, how do we enhance and improve this jewel, every inch of it from each side? So I'm asking that you all go and look at downtown Beach Street, and then do the same for Main Street. You can even do the same for Seabreeze, but Main Street, the lighting, I think we could maybe think about looking at the trees, because they have palm trees. It's not the same because they're not down in the middle. Then look at the lights on the side and see, you know, you'll see areas where you see, this is a part of the reason why I brought the idea before us about the 2:00 o'clock bar closing. We have to consider it. It doesn't mean I'm going to try to force it down your throats if you don't agree with it. But when you think about how dark Main Street is, how grummy it is, and then you think about how much crime happens on Main Street, you think about the same thing on Seabreeze. If you decide ultimately not to do that, we have to do things to make our streets safer. And I think that's rather low-hanging fruit, but we'll get to that point when we get to it. I don't think we have to be in a rush. That's something, if we decided to do it, we could decide to do it a year from now. Third thing. Atlantic Housing has brought before us, and I shared with you all this last week from the city attorney, proposal that they have shared with our staff about an affordable housing unit on Clyde Morris. I think it's 216 affordable units for, for single families, 81 for senior citizens. And then there's another number, maybe 200 or 300 number of apartments at market rate. It is an ideal project, because it marries all of these people into one community, marries them into a community that will still end up paying $215,000 in property taxes, whereas they're asking us to give them $57,000 rebate. This is something that we have to have brought before us in the very near future, because this project is almost done. What I would ideally like to have seen, although I have to talk with them again, is that we split the cost with the county. But I think that their plan was to go to the county and ask them for a part of their property taxes, just as they were coming to ask us. Ideally, I wanted to just split the price with the county, and then we use this as a model of what we do all across Volusia County, to get more affordable units all over the place. We pay for some of the property taxes, the county pays for some, and I've shared that with county commissioners. I don't know if you've had a chance to share it with their staff or not, but, but it's, this is the direction, something that will be coming before us. Last thing. Mayor's outreach team. I'm going to create a mayor's outreach team of people that will go out into our community to ask questions of people, to do surveys, and essentially to gather the community's sentiments about things in different neighborhoods, or to pass out flyers like the police. I was so excited when they did that. That really pumped me up. Made me, and I was grateful to see that we had a police department that was willing to go door to door and say to people, "This is where you can get your vaccine." How appreciative would I be as a resident to have a police officer show up at my door and do that? And it was already in my head to create this mayor's outreach team so we can gather information when we need to know what a community thinks about things. And I conclude my remarks by saying, giving a sincere thank you to Commissioner Delgado for what I think was an excellent job, making it transparent, having a community meeting. You know, I think this process, you know, we talk about transparency. We tried to be as transparent as we could possibly be throughout the process of hiring a manager. I think that you guys did that meeting. It surprised me, but I think it was just fabulous, and I'm appreciative of it. And that concludes my remarks. Anyone else? Okay.
No, can we get two minutes?
Yes, this meeting, Mr. Manager, I'm sorry.
No, sir, I'm good.
Bob?
No, thank you.
Okay, we're going to take five minutes, and then we'll-
Okay, we're going to go ahead and start our public comment forum. Our first speaker is Catherine Smith, and on deck is Frederick Brown. Okay, Mr. Frederick Brown?
I'm still here. Mr. Mayor, good to see your smiling face after that dissertation we just went through. And I'll give you another thing to smile about. Buc-E's, they're putting in electric chargers. They're working on negotiation with Tesla. Okay, Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. There's a couple of things I wanted to talk about this evening, and I'm going to do it the way my savior did it, in parables. If I had submitted an application to be a city manager, and I said, "Well, I graduated magna cum laude from Harvard University. I followed that up with a PhD from Stanford University. I got 45 years' experience in every city in this country, and I submitted that as my application, and you voted me in." What would you do? Obviously, that would be considered a false application. The responsible city commission would then therefore reject their decision, rescind it. I bring you back to the meeting of May 20th, 2020. Consent agenda item 8U. The giving away of public lands. And Mayor, I compliment you on what you've done for some of the city parks, but you've missed the opportunity. You were provided a false application. Facts not in evidence, facts that are incorrect, facts that were just, like, lies. And when I present this to you, I haven't seen any research in it. I pointed out that your city staff failed to do due diligence in reporting that it goes against the city plan. That was their job. And then on page 112, it clearly states that there will be one, at least a minimum of one access every mile. You just gave away the last one. That is wrong. This needs to be rescinded. It needs to be taken back. That is public land deeded to the public forever back in 1926. Now, unfortunately, I only get 150 minutes to speak. I do want to talk to you about one other topic. Happened about two blocks from my house, sadly. Two women were hit and struck at an intersection, okay? One was tragically killed, the other one in critical condition. I'm still waiting for the file-up report. I've only got eight seconds left, but what I want to ask is, you need a task force now. There are technical solutions to the problem, and I want to be on it.
Task force for what?
For improving the intersections. I have a great deal of information that I have researched. There is answers. The intersection, if you're familiar with it, right there in front of the nautilus- The intersection, if you're familiar with it, right there in front of the Nautilus Inn where the woman was tragically killed, she was in a crosswalk and got mowed down. You want to talk about dark and dingy? Try driving on that intersection at night and see how badly it's lit, especially for pedestrians. You cannot even see them most of the time. Now, let me also point out, you go to Daytona Shores, they have those strobe lights, another bad idea. There's a thing called puck lights or in roadway warning lights, okay? Where you put them in road, it doesn't...
Your time, your time's up.
Thank you, sir, your time is up.
Know us about that the next time. Okay.
And if Commissioner Trager wanted to text, I'd text her about it. Thank you.
Can't do it. Email, okay.
Our next speaker is Charles Cherry, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Charles W. Cherry II, 732 Seaduck Drive, Daytona Beach. I'm here to answer a text by John Nicholson, who ironically is coming up after me, against the reputation of my father, Charles W. Cherry Senior, who has been dead now for 17 years. Want to know the truth? Log on to daytonatimes.com on the front page, click Salute to Our Founder. Daytona Beach was the site of a major slave plantation before its 1870 post-Civil War incorporation. It was a typically mean and racist city in the Sunshine State, which historically has the highest rate of racial lynchings anywhere in America. For more than 100 years, our great white male city fathers made all municipal decisions. Blacks and poor whites could only live in low-lying swampy land west of the Halifax, including an area of the city dump they sold to Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune to build her school for girls. Taxes paid by black and poor white landlord, landowners subsidized beachside development for decades. Daytona Citywide's voting scheme guaranteed them permanent city commission control. In 1954, Dr. Bethune called my father to work as a school accountant under the leadership of her successor, the legendary Dr. Richard V. Moore. Cherry Senior begins his civil rights career by building a bomb shelter at 623 Orange Avenue to house his wife and three children in safety. Mr. Nicholson said that he didn't break the backbone of racism by sacrificing an empty dormitory bed to a black roommate in school so there would be, open quote, "black preference" in city leadership. While he was making such a supreme sacrifice, I was receiving death threats at age eight, having crosses burned in our front yard at age nine, being followed by armed black Vietnam vets for our own personal protection, as my siblings and I rode our bikes to St. Paul's Catholic School at age 11, and having Dad leave my 10-year-old brother with a, with a loaded gun and instructions to shoot anyone coming through that front door while Dad and I went on civil rights marches at age 12. Yes, here in Daytona Beach. Under Dad's leadership, an NAACP federal lawsuit led to voting by zones rather than citywide. Voters ratified that change, which finally broke the political power of the great white fathers. Dad ran six times as a political candidate before he finally won. As Zone 6 City Commissioner, he advocated getting rid of ineffective white city staffers who let the black community slide into slumming black because competent black city staffers who cared about the city could do better. And he was right. Dad said the Housing Authority Board should be black because the white commissions supported by the city fathers let public housing become unfit for human habitation, and competent black people who cared could do better. And he was right. For decades, Daytona Beach was a mean, racist, southern city so typical of its times. It took strong...
Your time is up.
Thank you, sir.
...to move us forward, and that's what they did. Black, as I said, stop there. Whatever John is suggesting you, he is only corrected by his name and address, and I urge you to verify that.
Okay, your time is up. I agree with half of that.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Suzanne Odina.
John, 413 North Granby Avenue. I'm glad I'm real famous. Several things. One, with regard to Main Street looking dingy, about 10 years ago, I talked to Florida Power and Light with regard to raising the wattage on Main Street, and the lights just off of Main Street. It would cost the city an additional $800 a year to raise the wattage on the lights per year, and it could be paid for by the CRA, but apparently the city decided not to do it. Secondly, the arch, there are already two pillars on either side of Seabreeze. If you're talking about the arches along International and Main Street, they are just west of the sand. You couldn't do one on Seabreeze because you would have to be inside the building that the plaza owns. So an arch could not be put there. You could put one on the west side of A1A, but nobody could see it because when you're driving, you know, it's right there on your left-hand side or your right-hand side. So an arch would not be appropriate. Adding to those pillars would make a much more dynamic statement. Orman by the Sea sets aside a certain fund in their taxes every year for roads and sidewalks. I would ask the city to ask what they do because there's enough, apparently, from what I understand from their commissioner, that there's enough set aside from their taxes each year. It's not a lot, it's just a little bit, but it's enough to do their roads and their sidewalks year to year. Telephone poles, we have four telephone poles at a time in one location. Apparently, in 2003, they had a problem with the telephone pole, so they put another one in, never took the old one out. Then they put another one in, and now just recently, within the last year, they put a fourth one in. Apparently, they don't have to take them out like they used to. So we're getting dozens and dozens of telephone poles on our streets. There's got to be a way of getting rid of the old poles. As long as somebody has a, a line on it like AT&amp;T, the Florida Power and Light cannot take the pole out. New zones are coming up. When the census comes out, I want you to start thinking about changing the zones and make it more equitable. Bar closing, look at bar... Sorry, I'll call it next week.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
I can speak to two of your issues. The first is, first year in office, I was lobbying FPL and City to adjust the lighting on Main Street. We actually did do something about the lighting on Main Street, that's number one. Number two, Christmas time for two years in a row, the first year the city subsidized lighting on Main Street by wrapping it, the second year the city paid for it. Mr. Chisholm just met with Main Street Merchants and said he would look at improving the lighting by having the lights wrapped all year round as we do on Beach Street. So that's already in the works. There was one other thing you mentioned, the poles. First to second year in office, I received a complaint, and I also saw a person in a wheelchair in the road because there were two poles on the ramp to get onto the sidewalk. Took the pictures, sent it to FPL in Tallahassee. They started communicating with AT&amp;T as well as the television, and they were moving everything over. About a month ago, I had communication with FPL, and it's now a bill where everything is going to be transferred. That's what they're working on right now, where it's mandatory that it has to be transferred over and removed. So all those things are in the works.
I think there are more than wrapping the lights, that's, that's a solution.
More than simply wrapping the lights, there's more to be done on Main Street, even if it includes getting new light fixtures and making them even brighter than they are, adding lights, draping lights. This is why I'm asking everyone to go and look at it so we can come up with a comprehensive solution towards the lighting of Main Street. But at any rate, yes, I too have talked to him about...
Was done for the CRA? Because Suzanne Q. and passed something to reduce the lighting.
Yeah, well, we don't want that.
Neon, we can't have neon, we can't have blinking and all kinds of stuff.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Odina, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson. Okay? Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is Sandy Murphy.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Key Street. I'm delighted and very happy that we have a new city manager, Derek Preacher. I spoke for him Saturday, and I put it on my Facebook and the Bethune-Cuban grad site and got over 400 people that was very happy that he was elected. I didn't get to speak tonight, we're having some problems because we don't have access to our city hall. We have to sit outside, we don't have the access. With Scarlett Golden was here and Cherry, they diversified the workforce, they made sure we had access to city hall. We don't have that anymore. You need to open up city hall to the residents who are paying your salary and, and we pay taxes. It should have never been closed in the first place. Other cities have their city hall open. They're all on my Facebook, Port Orange, Daytona, Daytona Beach Shores, Orange City, Villa, their city hall is open to the public. And the residents are calling and asking, "Why have we been put out of city hall and why we don't have access to public comments until after adjournment?" That is ridiculous. It needs to be corrected. So maybe the city manager, if we get some new people in the office, it will be. Also, I heard you, Mayor, I heard you talking about Seabreeze and Main Street, and Midtown needs a lot of work. On my street, we need paving in the 300 block. The road is all cracked up down there by the mosque. And we also need that lot right next to Tim McRay. It's all groved up, where you tore that house down again. And in front of my house, 122 South Key Street, all cracked up. We are getting, we don't have transparency, and we don't have access to our public officials because of this virus. Well, it did, COVID came out, but that doesn't mean that we can't come in here and address our issues and concerns to you, who was elected by the people, to do your job and meet with the people to find out what they want. So yes, you're doing a lot of work over there on Mary McLeod Bethune. You painted the curves over there. When I came and met with the city manager and asked him, "Curls on Martin Luther King in front of shallow church, you need to make it happen." Thank you.
Thank you for coming out and sharing your opinions tonight.
Our next speaker is Sandy Murphy, and on deck is Stephen Miller.
Good evening, Sandy Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. First, I want to say thank you for passing the resolution that will fund the Affordable Housing Study. A lot of people will be saying, "Not one more study." But in this case, that is the tool that will allow us to charge linkage fees to developers and put those linkage fees towards affordable housing. So it was an important step that you took tonight, and I appreciate it. The other subject that I want to talk on is, again, affordable housing, and this time it's about the Sadowski Housing Trust Fund. And I've written to all of you about this. This is the state-level fund that is funded out of document stamped taxes that is supposed to be allocated entirely to affordable housing. And our state legislator has, legislature has repeatedly pulled funds from that, although we desperately need the money for affordable housing. This year, not only are they proposing to pull more than half of the funds away, they are also proposing to make that cut permanent, to permanently divert those funds that were originally directed for affordable housing and just permanently and capriciously move them elsewhere. That's not something that any of us in Florida can afford, and we in Daytona Beach really need the $700,000 a year that that cut would mean for us. So I'm here tonight to ask you if you would please propose and pass a resolution in favor of maintaining full funding for the Sadowski Housing Trust Fund and ask our state legislators and our governor to please keep that funding intact for its official and important initial use. Thank you.
Staff, I know nobody's here listening, but let's make sure that we get that to them, that I agree we need to get a resolution brought before the commission. Sadowski funds are important.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding us of that.
Our next speaker is Stephen Miller, and on deck is Ann Ruby.
Steve Miller, 383 Walnut Street, Daytona Beach, Florida. A couple of things, Mr. Mayor, city commissioners, I just want to say, I think most of us old people have our technis shot now, our virus shot, and it's almost time for us to open up our little community centers for us old people so we can begin to communicate and deal with each other. Number two, I want to say, thank you guys for the vote tonight and completing the city managed search and the contract. I'm convinced that you guys made an awesome decision, not just because I'm from Winter Haven, where Mr. Fieto was born and raised, but as a citizen of Daytona Beach. And, and then I was outside and I saw this beautiful colored picture of my commissioners, the, the, what normally used to be the city fathers, but we call them the city mothers right now, because I see these beautiful five ladies here. I look at Ms. Trager there from Second Avenue Merchants, and I see my sister there from the continent of Africa, and I see Stacy here, and I see my two sisters, Paula Reed and Ms. Henry, and I'm thinking, wow, this got to be one of the most diverse commission in the entire state of Florida. And I'm so excited to be a part of this community to say, "Thank you, guys. I'm so excited about you guys." And, and city mothers, I know you all are going to do the right thing. And again, I just want to say thank you. And Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for your leadership, sir.
I like that term, "city mothers." I want to say that, I like it. Oh, if you don't want to be a mother, you're thinking about...
Our final speaker tonight is Ann Ruby.
Is the final speaker? Oh, all right.
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. A couple of things. One, we learned at the BMW meeting the other night that FDOT is going to be putting new lights on Seabreeze. There's already two different kinds of lights on Seabreeze. If you're talking about doing a Seabreeze arch, somebody needs to get things coordinated so that the arch and the lights have a cohesive visual whole. And if we're going to do this branding thing, we really need to have it be cohesive throughout the city, not necessarily colors, not necessarily shapes, but there should be something that even viscerally ties things together. So I really hope we can put some thought into that and maybe get to FDOT before they just throw any kind of lights up there, a third kind. When it comes to public records requests, I want to say a great big thank you to the city clerk's office. Ms. LaMagna and her staff do an amazing job with, they're highly professional, they, they provide the, they answer the requests with alacrity and grace, and I am eternally grateful. I'm also, as I said, relentlessly curious. That's why I make these public records requests. I have made public records requests on things like the history of the city managers, reviews, how the documentation, how did the WC Grand decision get made? That's a good puzzle. It's in the past, but it's good to know how. You know, what happened with the DME lease on the municipal stadium, and what are, what are the expenses that are going to be coming after that? What are the CRA expenditures, revenues, fund balances? I'm trying to read my handwriting, which is always difficult. You know, what are the demographics of employees at city hall so that we can look at the kind of, the diversity that we have, which we know needs improvement, but I haven't seen anything on that recently. So, and you know, other things I ask for are like copies of agenda items that are no longer available online, CDs of videos of these meetings that I can't download, so I have to ask as a CD. Handouts made on the dais that aren't part of the backup on the agenda items. You know, things, copies of studies and reports that you can't find online. I think that, oh, how, you know, the actual cost of the, what we were spending to maintain Riverfront Park, you know? That was not something that was forthcoming before you voted. And, you know, like, what was the city manager's, what was the contract for First Step Shelter? So I ask questions because I am curious and I want to know, and I work full-time at another job. I'm going to retire in July, so it's not going to get less, it's going to...
I like that answer there, that's tough. Yeah, that's, that's, I'm happy for you. All right, Daytona Beach, good night. You are a dream come true.